We are continuation of our special meeting. It's six o'clock. This is the presentation of the train stop. We're going to turn it over in a second to our town manager. I first want to recognize the entire councils here. We've already been, we've already taken roll calls. So that's why we're not, we're not going to go through roll call. But I also want to recognize we have Representative Hall here in the audience along with our Chief, Chief Fox, Representative Arnone is again in virtual land, Representative Senator Kissel, and of course Congressman Courtney, I guess calling in from Washington. Welcome to everyone. We have our staff here. This is obviously a very big night for the town of Enfield. We're very excited. We appreciate A your time and B for attending and we hope you enjoy the presentation. I think, you know, this is a long time coming and I'm going to turn it over to our town manager, Christopher Bronson. If you could just hold off any questions, we will, the presentation will go first. We'll then allow Representative Courtney and then the state reps if you have any comments. We won't question and answer with you folks, but you're certainly allowed to, you know, any questions or comments you'd like to make. We'll give you that time and then we'll save the remaining part of the meeting for any general questions from the council, you know, to the manager. So again, we want to make sure everyone gets a chance. Yeah, we appreciate everyone being here and without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager, Christopher Bronson. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and our esteemed guests. It is a very exciting evening. It is the culmination really of a long period of time, years and years, well over a decade of work that's been done by this council, by our representatives. And also when our both representatives were on the council, they worked on this as well. Senator Kissel has been working on it and Joe has been heading up our federal assistance in this matter. We're very excited to report that after very focused effort, I think a reinvigoration of the town's effort and staff to bring the train station back to Enfield, that after, I think about, we've been meeting two and a half years was when we first met November 2018 or 2019. And that actually, we've had the good fortune to meet with not only the Commissioner of DOT Joe Giuliani, but also the governor's been here to look at the site. And as a result of that, we lobbied them to change from a $50 million station to a platform, something that would be more workable, more fiscally responsible, that would make more common sense. We offered even to put some money in the kitty and also to utilize a federal earmark we'll talk about in a little while, also towards that amount to show we would have some skin in the game. And I think it got their attention because I think most people have their hand out and they want projects from the state. But I know the governor, when he was out here and his head sort of turned when we said, and we're willing to put up money from the town. I think that impressed them. And the fact that this is probably going to come in at about half the cost of the initial station, accomplish everything and more with all the amenities you're going to hear about, but also frees up money probably to fund another station on the Hartford line. And I think that's the goal of government, to be efficient and to share in it because we need the line to be successful, not only in Connecticut, but in the Northeast quarter. As I say, I'd like to thank the governor because he personally endorsed this project. He not only came here, but he, he's worked with DOT. They told us a couple of weeks ago, he's aware of this project and he fully supports the new platform station idea. I don't want to be remiss. There are some folks that have been working on this for years, our partners. This really has been a collaborative, public and private partnership. And on the public side, it's involved local, state and federal employees. Some of our partners, I'd just like to acknowledge that we're going to be working with and have been working with for years that brought us this far this evening. And one is the Commissioner of DOT Joe Giuliani. Sorry, Commissioner, if I mispronounced it. Carol will correct me when she speaks, or perhaps Carl. Some of those names, Carl's a little more proficient. And I would just like to say that a couple of folks at DOT, and there's a whole team working on this from engineers and a lot of people, but the Assistant Rail Administrator, John Burnick, has been with us from the beginning. I'd like to thank John. Richard Andreski, he is the Bureau Chief of the Bureau of Public Transportation. He's been very helpful over the last two years guiding us. I'd like to also thank the FTA. That's the Federal Transportation Administration. Joe's office has been in touch with them because they allowed us to redirect the earmark that we had. It was designated, and you know how difficult it is with the bureaucracy in Washington sometimes, Joe's office was instrumental. And I've got to give credit, this director, Mr. Kimi from Boston, he's the director, he came here to Enfield several months ago with an entire team, was very impressed in our, in our request and completely endorsed the plan that you're going to see this evening. Again, a good collaborative effort with federal partners. We also have been very fortunate to have at the Greater Hartford Transit Authority, an executive director who's been in our corner and also is responsible for the funds that come through the federal government. She has been involved, she has been a good partner, and that is Vicky Schottland. And she'll be working with us to bring this train into the station. And I'd also like to thank our partners at Amtrak. We have a friend who's a senior manager who's going to be instrumental. We've been working with him on a project out at the Water Pollution Control Center, as well as our friends from DOT have been involved in that in deep. And that is Al Warner, and he's going to be involved in this as we move forward. I'll just say before the presentation, we're also working with corporate partners, Lego, Winstanley, NMDAR. They're all very anxious to have this train, to have this platform for their employees so that they can commute from here to go to other places. And also they're interested in the housing we have down there and housing to come for some of their executives and their other employees. So it's really going to be a hand in hand effort. It's going to be transformational for the town. And with that, we're going to start on the presentation and share with you the exciting I think it helps to know where you've been, to know where you're going. And I think it's amazing we've come full circle. This is the train station that opened in Enfield in 1884. And it was there at the exact site. To the right was the station. That's where we're going to be putting the new platform in the building. On the left in the back, you can see the Bigelow comment, excuse me, the Bigelow's behind the station. We'll, we'll address that in a little bit. But that's the Casket Building that the town and previous councils had the wisdom to purchase. And we're going to be hearing about that. But we had train service in Enfield for about 100 years. It was curtailed. The station came down in 1971. There was still platform service until 1986. So for 100 years, we had train service in Enfield. So this is sort of going back to the future.
I like that, Chris.
Thank you, John. And what we're going to do is we're now going to show you how this started. And I'm glad John piped in because John set up one of the earlier meetings at DOT, at the, actually the Legislative Office Building. John sits on the Transportation Committee and is well respected in the legislature. He hosted a meeting with Carol and Tom Arnone and the folks from Joe Courtney's office. We met with the Commissioner. We had to convince him, number one, Enfield really wasn't on the map for a station. It was a concept. And as I've said, if we were, it was going to be probably after 2025, we would receive it. We said, you know, we have, we've got a better idea. Tom Arnone said to me, well, can you put something down? Can you have something that we can submit? So our Director of Public Works, sort of this is just a little bit more than a sketch on a napkin, but this is what we proposed. Change the station concept. Let's go to the east side and let's do a platform. Give us the platform, give us the stop and we'll do the rest. That's how it started. And the next slide will show you where we end up after the last two and a half years of effort with our local, state and federal help. This is the new station design and I'm going to let our Director of Public Works, who actually drew the napkin diagram, go through it with you and explain what the new design entails. Donald?
Good evening again to our esteemed guests, mayor, councilors. So one of the beauties of this overall conceptual design is that it is intermodal and offers riders multiple options to use the train. Again, this area in Thompsonville is absolutely made for the train station and all proposed ancillary improvements that accompany it. There will be an abundant amount of parking on the west side of Commerce Street, the southwest corner of Bigelow Commons and the south side of Main Street. Altogether, there will be approximately 107 parking spaces and four van accessible spaces as well. Town staff would engage Bigelow Commons for additional parking if the need arose as they have significant underutilized parking areas. There will be walkways from the parking lots to the main walkway that heads towards the platform and also from the bus drop off, Kisten ride area to the south. The original napkin sketch had a platform that was located on the east side of the track, was 40 feet long and was able to accommodate one train. The new platform shown here in red, which is also located entirely on the east side of the track, will be 200 feet long, accommodate six cars, be fully accessible and have a canopy running the entire length. Access to the platform would be from accessible ramps coming from mechanical building. Mechanical building can be located somewhere between the parking lot on the west side of Commerce Street and this main walkway. The turnaround located at the northerly end of Commerce Street will be able to handle all commercial passenger buses, magic carpet buses, school buses, and really any other multi-passenger vehicle. Those vehicles will travel on Commerce Street, use the turnaround and drop off and pick up passengers from the drop off Kisten ride area. To better serve these riders and all other multimodal vehicles that could be utilized in the train station, the intersection of Main Street and Commerce Street would be realigned to the greatest extent possible to make it safer to enter and exit. And if that wasn't enough, the proposed design includes raising the bridge over Main Street to a posted height of 13 feet, six inches. In doing so, it will allow for flexibility of expansion on the west side of the tracks across from the Casket Company as any commercial vehicle, including buses and tractor trailers, will now be allowed to pass under. When this train station is complete in the next two years, it will truly be a multimodal train station with numerous opportunities for expansion and development in Thompsonville. So the rendering that you see is the utility building from the Windsor Lock Station. The one proposed for our Enfield station may not be the exact size or shape, but will offer similar features such as aesthetics, amenities and functionality. The building will house all mechanicals required to operate the station and have a weatherproof area for riders to wait the oncoming train. Some of the amenities at and around the building will be ATMs, ticket dispensers, lighting, trash receptacles, wayfinding signage, variable message boards and security cameras. Mechanical building and platform will be fully outfitted with state of the art security cameras and other safety measures that will be directly monitored and tied into Amtrak police and also our own Enfield police department. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Director Nunes. This next slide is going to be gone through with you by Nelson Tericio. He's the Assistant Director of Economic and Community Development. I think it's important for our residents to know, we've been working on a lot of projects in this area that directly touch basically this intermodal transit station. So he's going to go over those that are most important and discuss them with you now. Nelson?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Town Council. Good evening, Enfield delegation. The Enfield train station will assist in spurring the revitalization of neighboring properties that are considered by the town as prime locations for economic redevelopment. In fact, one of the reasons behind locating the Enfield train station to the east side of the Hartford line was to allow for the proposed riverfront redevelopment of these parcels. The previous plan for the Enfield station would have required additional parking to the west of the Hartford line, which would have deterred from providing for the sufficient space to allow for private redevelopment of these parcels. As we can see from this plan, there are currently three redevelopment locations on the west side of the Hartford line. Located directly adjacent to the Hartford line, 33 North River Street is a property that is, that the town acquired in 2017 with the vision of ultimately seeking a private developer to rehabilitate this property. Directly across the street from 33 North River Street property are four parcels totaling approximately three acres that are currently owned by Eversource Energy. These parcels previously housed a former power generating station and is no longer being utilized by Eversource. The town has completed the necessary environmental investigation at this property and working on acquiring these parcels from Eversource this year. Adjacent to the Eversource properties is a 3.24 acre privately owned parcel, which is like the Eversource properties, is situated right along the Connecticut River and these properties are located outside of the 100-year limit. Also, as you can notice, to the top left corner of this plan, the town is currently working with the Connecticut Department of Transportation on the reconstruction of the South River Street Bridge. In the next four slides, I will be providing a more in-depth look at this project. Our town council unanimously approved and has authorized the Connecticut Department of Transportation to move forward with its final design of the South River Street Bridge project. This project will provide our residents with a safer, wider and more pedestrian friendly bridge. The existing bridge is currently 22 feet wide and does not have a sidewalk. The proposed new bridge will increase the width of the bridge to 34 feet while also increasing the roadway approaches along both sides of South River Street, conforming to DOT design standards, while also addressing the structural deficiencies of the existing bridge. The photo to the left shows a rendering, which was provided by the DOT of what the bridge will look like once construction is completed. Next slide. The town is excited about the potential resurrection of the former Casket Hartford building. To the left, you will see an existing photo of this building and to the right, you will see a rendering of its potential. My office has been working with the state's Historic Preservation Office on getting this property nominated on the National Register of Historic Places due to the property's historical and architectural significance. Getting the property listed on the National Register of Historic Places provides developers opportunities for preservation incentives such as federal preservation grants for the actual rehabilitation, as well as a federal tax credits. As you can see on this slide, this property is approximately 23,000 square feet in size and is four stories high. The town has evaluated redevelopment options and based on our assessment, this property can consist of mixed uses of office, retail, restaurant and residential. Based on this plan, our Thompsonville District zoning regulations would require approximately 60 parking spaces to support this type of development. In talking with interested developers regarding the redevelopment of 33 North River Street, the same concern continues to come up, comes up as a related partner. Developers need parking. By acquiring the Eversource properties, it will allow the town to not only to have additional riverfront access, but also provide necessary parking needed to support 33 North River Street 's development. There is a rendering of a parking plan concept that shows approximately 50 parking spaces and a bus drop off area. This next slide provides a rendering of a riverfront housing development along the Connecticut River. This is a 3.24, 3.24 acre former industrial property that was previously used as a power plant for the former Bigelow Carpet Company manufacturing facility. This site was, has remained vacant since the 1970s and is ripe for redevelopment opportunities. And the Levitts family, who is the current owner, is actively seeking the redevelopment of this property. The state's commitment to constructing a train station here at Enfield will serve as a catalyst to engage private investment of this parcel. And finally, the Bigelow Commons. Here is a picturesque view of our current job. The Bigelow Commons, which was once home to the Bigelow Hartford Carpet Mills, was once the largest manufacturer of carpeting in the United States. When the mills were redeveloped into the Bigelow Commons, it was at that time the largest historic rehabilitation project in the state's business. The site is currently listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The Bigelow Commons is home to over 700 residents, over 5,000 square feet of occupied commercial space, who would benefit greatly from having a train stop in their own backyard.
Thank you, Nelson. Next, we're going to hear from Lori Whitten. She's our Director of Development Services. She's going to tell you why this train station is so important to all the residents of Enfield and to our neighbors. Lori?
Thank you, Chris, and good evening. When we look at our local statistics, it becomes more apparent as to how the station can benefit the citizens of Enfield. Enfield's population is approximately 44,400. Of that, 20,600 were employed in 2020 per the Department of Labor Statistics. And that's almost half of our population, which is pretty incredible that that many are working in our town. Of those 3, 3,900 were employed within Enfield, 6,700 commute out of town, 1,600 commute to Hartford, 1,400 to Windsor, and just over 1,000 commute to Springfield, Mass. Only 167 of those commuters actually use public transportation while over 15,000 drive to work. Next slide, please. There will be quantifiable local and regional benefits. The Connecticut Department of Transportation announced that in the first two years of service, the Hartford line has carried more than 1.2 million passengers. In fact, the DOT has reported that even while under COVID-19 restrictions, ridership has exceeded their expectation. And by 2030, it's estimated that 1.15 million car trips will have been eliminated annually in the 52-mile I-91 corridor as a result of the train. Next slide, please. This station is not just a stop, but a hub to the spine of Connecticut, Boston, New York and the Northeast corridor. We will be promoting multimodal opportunities with trains, planes and automobiles and pedestrian ways. Ultimately, you will be able to take the train to the plane when access to Bradley International Airport is sidelined. Back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Lori.
Now, our Assistant Tom, Kasia Persiello is going to tell you, we've expanded just for Greater Thompsonville, how this development of the train station is going to positively impact other areas beyond the footprint of the train station itself. And Nelson, over. Kasia?
Thank you, Chris, and good evening to everyone. So we have been in talks with the Build America Bureau of the Federal Department of Transportation for over a year. The Build America Bureau offers a TICIA loan, which stands for Transportation and Interest of Finance and Innovation. This TICIA loan can only finance the candidate oriented district projects within walking distance of station. Before this plan, we could not qualify for any of their very attractive financing, which has several benefits for the town. Now, thanks to this announcement from DOT, we will be able to restart conversations to make dreams come to reality in Thompsonville and continue the town's reinvestment in the area. The first of these dreams is Higgins Park. Higgins Park will be behind the town hall. It is envisioned to have a walking path, playground, bench shelves, lawn seating and a pool. Tonight, the town council will be voting on the building consolidation plan, which will begin making this vision a reality by investing in the Enfield Express. The Enfield Express, located at 800 Enfield Street, has 1.7 acres that will be available as parking to support the new use of the Higgins Park. This past summer, we revamped our farmer's market and began hosting it on Sundays at the town hall. We had over 80 vendors attend at the beach. This upcoming summer, we expect to continue our success. The additional parking from the Enfield Express will be a huge benefit to our farmer's market attendees and vendors. Adjacent to the future Higgins Park, town hall and the Enfield Express is the St. and Dalbridge Gymnasium. The town council will also vote tonight to set aside funding. They begin the process of restoring the beautiful gymnasium and theater for our community and for future partnerships with local culture and arts organizations. We will be able to host tournaments and games for many popular sports here in town, including basketball, pickleball and others. Slide please. In addition, tonight, the town council will be voting to fund the demolition of the Strand Theater and the Le Mania Center. The vision is for that location to become mixed use commercial and residential development, which will be walking distance to the Enfield train station, to Higgins Park, the St. and Dalbridge Gymnasium, downtown Thompsonville and the Freshwater Pond across the street. The town council has greatly invested in Freshwater Pond. In 2020, the town funded the dredging of the pond. The walkway was completed in 2015 and streetscape improvements were done in 2011. Most recently, the council has acted to repair the spillway, which is planned for this upcoming spring of 2021. In addition, in November of 2020, the council voted to add paddle boats to the pond for the community. These paddle boats will also be arriving this spring of 2021 in the coming months. As you can see from this image, there are two community gardens also walking distance from the future housing and pond. The garden on North Main Street was the original Enfield community garden with 35 garden ponds. This garden proved to be so successful, then the past year, the town council added 30 plots right next to the Le Mania Center on Chapel Street and then another 140 plots spread across town at Lafayette Park, Remanda Park, the former Alcorn School and the Central Library. We expect them to be completely filled this upcoming season as they have been each past year. Slide please. Here you will see a map showing all that we've discussed tonight. As you heard tonight, you can see here, the arrival of the train station will have many benefits to Thompsonville and the entire Enfield community. I'd like to add my presentation on a video showing some highlights of this great town and what it has to offer.
Thank you, Kasia, and thank you all the presenters. I think that it just shows what a great town and community we have and where we're going in the future. There are so many things to talk about. I don't even have the time this evening. This didn't even include what we're doing at the Alcorn campus with the outside, you know, basketball courts, garden plots, parking and part of the consolidation you'll be considering this evening. Or Lafayette Park, where we invested also within walking distance, basketball courts, garden plots. We have future plans for a nature trail and a dog park there. And I'll just tell you, we're not stopping there. I'm glad our state and federal partners are here because we're going to be looking for your help. We want to build back across the Connecticut River to Suffield. We want a walking bridge and a fishing pier where the old bridge used to be. And we're looking to also put in an eagle watch on our boat launch, which the state has, which brings a lot of people. You would be surprised, people and photographers from across the Northeast to take the pictures of the wintering eagles. We have an asset that no one else has, that pristine gorgeous Connecticut River. And we're going to, we're going to access it and we're going to use it to our benefit. And why our residents at home should think and know this is so important is because when we have this development and we bring in people who are going to be doing new businesses, expanding existing housing, that adds to our grand list and it reduces the pressure and the taxes on our everyday residents. That's the goal here. And I'll tell you, it's succeeding, even in the pandemic, as you all know. We added this council funded by necessity due to the demand of building permits, an additional full-time assistant building inspector to keep up with the permits because so many people are expanding their homes, their businesses and companies in Enfield. We are the gateway to Connecticut. So I thank you.
Hey, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
John, if you wouldn't, sorry, Senator, if you wouldn't mind, hold on.
I'm sorry, I just have a quick question.
What we'll be doing, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over. Everybody will have a chance. We're going to start with our congressman. And I just want to make it clear to you that this evening, really certainly anybody's able to ask questions, but this really was the presentation to get out there, the accomplishments. And I will let you know that the Department of Transportation will be here in this chamber at one of our meetings in March. They will be presenting the final design and they will be taking questions from the council. And also, they will be having public hearings, so the public will have full input as to our new design. I'm going to tell you, it's important to note, and I've shared it with our reps and with our congressmen, that DOT has made it clear to me, they have funding for the design and the engineering in the next year plus, and we are programmed for the platform. But clearly, there are hurdles, the Special Transportation Fund and other issues they'll speak to, but they are committed to this. And as the DOT told us in our last meeting, the governor supports this project in Enfield. With that.
Thank, Senator Kissel, sorry, Senator Kissel.
Paul, maybe you can adjust.
Senator Kissel, this is Mayor Luttrell. If you wouldn't mind, we just want to make sure we want to give, we're going to go in line, we're going to give everyone a chance to speak. So if you would just hold tight for a second, I want to go to, again, he's calling in from Washington, again, as an example of how local, state and federal government actually can work together if they actually want to. And I think, again, we want to make sure we're showing everyone the time and the respect that they deserve. You know, Congressman Courtney has been here with us. We really started this in earnest about three and a half years ago to really kick it back up. He's worked very closely with our office, with the town manager and with our, all the presentations you've seen tonight. So, sir, again, I just want to make sure that we're just going to go in order and, you know, again, you're the congressman, we're going to go congressman, senator and representatives, give everyone a chance to give their chance to speak. So again, we thank you for being here. A, we thank for your assistance in where we at. You heard the manager say, we're going to have DOT here in March. This is, this is a go for us and we want to thank you in advance. And I'll stop talking, you have the floor, sir. Welcome, welcome.
Great, well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the invitation to join you. I was thinking, I don't think I've ever been to an Enfield Town Council meeting before and I really am very grateful for opportunity. I promise I won't filibuster for John, I promise, I won't, I'll be quick. But I really just want to say, you know, the town staff has put something together which many of us know, I believe, finally solves an issue that has been stuck for at least a dozen years. You know, the federal funds which Chris referred to, which are available. You know, the federal funds which Chris referred to, which are available, it's about 3.4 million, have actually been rattling around for about 10 years. It was, and these are, there were two earmarks that were allotted for Enfield, and just because, you know, the sun and the moon and the stars weren't aligned properly, we really could never sort of push the send button to get that money released. And it took real leadership locally to finally come up with, you know, again, the staff to design a proposal, which, as Chris pointed out at the beginning, you know, really showed Enfield's seriousness by proposing a somewhat, you know, modified scope, but also an affordable scope, and one that the town was actually willing to put its money where its mouth is. And I think that really was like the Da Vinci Code, which finally unlocked this problem and, you know, got us to the place that we're here today. You know, again, just Nelson's comments, you know, about, sorry, Don's comments about, you know, that it's an intermodal project, I can tell you from dealing with the federal government and federal DOT, that is the magic word in terms of trying to get federal funds released. They do not want to just sort of go back to just sort of the cars-only or one-modal-only type of transportation. They realize people live their lives differently than that, and making it very much integrated is key to getting federal investment. So, you know, that, again, jumped off the page to me. You know, Nelson's description of how infrastructure is a catalyst, it is absolutely true. It's an economic force multiplier, and, you know, all the, you know, sort of benefits that adjoining properties and projects are going to benefit from are clearly just sort of scream out. And Lori's statistics show that that screaming is real in terms of the population. It also coincides with something that is apparent to millennials. You know, the lifestyle's different now for that age group. You know, the Gen Z'ers, who basically are not as invested in cars, they want walkability, they want other options, and rail, again, whether shoreline east on the coastal, you know, part of Connecticut, or, you know, other sort of metro areas, transit, mass transit and rail really, I think, fits in perfectly with, I think, the emerging demographics that's coming forward. So, you know, again, I just can't say enough about Chris and his leadership here when he reached out, and I have to tell you, the federal government, which has been holding on to these funds, as I said, for a decade, this is the last earmark that is in Regions One in New England, because as many of you know, earmarks no longer exist. They were, you know, we changed the rules of Congress to eliminate earmarks, I think it was a mistake personally, but that was back in 2010. So, you know, this is literally the last man standing in terms of these funds that are available, and we've had good meetings, and Chris described some of the folks that participated in it. They're there on this, they're really, you know, pretty hopeful that this is going to be it, you know, this is going to be the plan. And, I mean, because I'm a little concerned if somehow this sort of migrates into something else, you know, the availability of these funds, you know, is not permanent. And, but again, it looks like all the pieces have been put together, you know, really intelligently and, you know, with real great thought. And I'll just end with the fact that there's, you know, last July, we passed an infrastructure bill in the House. It just ran out of time in the last Congress. As we get sort of past the sort of COVID, you know, just recovery and sustain, that we have to get into a pro-growth position in this country, and that infrastructure bill, H.R. 2 Moving Forward Act, the transition team that's coming in has already signaled that that's something that they really want to move pretty quickly in the next year or two. So, you know, what Enfield's doing, the direction it's headed, I think really is totally in tandem, where I think Washington's headed, Hartford's headed, and, but it wouldn't be happening if the local leadership hadn't come together and just sort of grabbed the bull by the horns, and that's what you guys have done. So, kudos to all of you. And with that, I will yield the floor.
Thank you, congressman, and let them know in Washington, we're shovel-ready here in Enfield.
Again, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Again, you're welcome to a county, Enfield Town Council meeting, anytime.
We apologize, it's been so long, and we'll definitely have you back as we proceed. Thank you, congressman.
And so appreciate your patience. Senator Kissel, you have the floor, sir.
Hey, thank you, guys. First, the reason I wanted to chime in is like, one of the first things I did when I was first elected 28 years ago was secure $300,000 to fix the roof on the theater. So before you tear it down, if I can get a walk around inside, I've never been inside that theater, and I feel sort of sad. I mean, I don't disagree with your plan to tear it down.
Well, that's a different subject, Senator. Thank you for bringing it up, but we'll have to fit you for a Tyvek suit because you can't go in because of the hazardous materials. That's how far it's deteriorated. I have walked through it, we didn't do that lightly to make the recommendation, but it is too far gone to save. We understand the sentimentality, but we're going to deal with that later in the program if you'd like to stay, but we'd like to limit our remarks here for the train station, if you would.
You got it. Well, thank you, Chris. First of all, I was lucky enough to serve with Congressman Courtney in my first term, and it was a delight. And he's been a pleasure to work with, I love Rob Simmons, but, you know, Congressman Courtney could be better for this town of Enfield, and I just want to thank him for part of this meeting. You got it, buddy. And I wanted to chime in and say, whatever happened at that Capitol, that was a disgrace, in my humble opinion, and I respect you for serving our country, and we can't let that ever happen again.
Amen.
All right, so, train station. I serve on transportation. I was re-elected, and I was renominated to transportation. Commissioner Giuliani has relatives in my district, and we have a good relationship, and Pam Cicado, who's the liaison, and I get along really well. I'll do whatever I can, Chris, and Mayor Ludwig, to do whatever I can to expedite this. The federal funding will be really helpful, we can't do it on our own, but, yeah, this is going to be a game changer for Thompsonville, and that's where I live. I live here in Enfield, I live on Fruit Terrace. I live like a walking distance from where this train platform would become. And you're right, millennials are different. My oldest son had lost his job because of the COVID, couldn't find a job in Connecticut, and now he's working up in Northampton. How nice, if he could just like hop on a train and go up to Northampton and get to his job. So, this is huge, and if we can make it happen, Enfield's going to change. And like my in-laws told me that the Thompsonville area used to be really prosperous. It wasn't like it is now, not that I'm disparaging it now. I live there now, but I've gone campaigning and have people shooting fireworks over my head in the middle of the day, was sort of crazy.
So Senator Kissel, I, could you, not that, we want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak, could you, would you mind kind of wrapping it up? I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I really appreciate the fact that you want me to wrap it up, but here's the deal. We need the train platform, anything that Congressman Courtney can do, I appreciate from the bottom of my heart. I will do whatever I can as a member of the Transportation Committee, and I really respect the leadership of Chris Bronson, Mayor Ludwig, and the others on the town council for leading this charge.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Again, thank you, again, thank you for being here, and thank you for anything you can do, have done, and will do in the future.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, John.
So I want to give, we're going to go, Representative Arnoni, thank you again for being here as well, sir. I know you're out, you're in virtual, and we'll end with Representative Hall. Again, sir, appreciate all your help, and you have the floor, welcome. Tom, you're on mute, sorry, sir.
That's the last thing an elected official wants to be, is muted, Tom.
Yeah, you're still on mute. Yeah.
All right, what we'll do, Tom, we'll have Paul Russell and our technical people assist you, and with that, we'd ask Carol to come up.
Sorry, Tom, hold on, yeah, go ahead, Carol.
Carol will bump it up and they'll get you squared away. Alex and Paul, if you could be working with Tom to get him online in a moment, I'd appreciate it.
Welcome, welcome, thank you for being here, and again, thank you for all your help on this project, and you have the floor.
Well, it's a great pleasure being here tonight because this has been, as everybody in this room is well aware, a project in long waiting, so to speak, and I know Chris mentioned 12 years, but I think for those of us that have served on the council going back into the 90s, I think Cindy, I'm looking around, and Mike was there in the 90s, this was a Mary Lou Strom baby to begin with, and she felt very strong about this project and pushed for many years. She walked us down that river many times to look at the Casket Building before it was purchased. So her vision is now kind of coming to fruition all these years later. So it's pretty amazing when you think of the touches on this project going back that many years, it's pretty phenomenal to see it get to this point. And I think it's gotten to this point because we've had a council and a town manager and a state and federal delegation that has really worked well collectively together to make it happen. Chris, your persistence and your belief in this project, I think, has been the driving force behind it. The fact that you have a government that supports you here is amazing, and I think it's thanks to everybody in this room that we're at this point today. So I just wanted to thank you all personally. I think it shows how hard everybody's worked on this project, and it's been a, it's been a great project moving forward. So as your state delegation, we're going to push our very hardest to get it over the finish line. I think we've gotten it this far, and I think you've got enough support from everybody in this room, and of course federally and state is going to be just the final push. So I thank you for having me here tonight, and congratulations to every single person in this room, and mainly to the town of Enfield, who's going to gain all the benefits from this project. So thanks for having us, and hopefully Tom's microphone's working now.
Tom, can you hear us?
Nope, still not, okay. Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
And I'd just like to thank Carol for her tireless efforts and her advocacy. I'll tell you, it's always nice when you go into a room with the DOT and some heavy hitters, and you have somebody of Carol's caliber sitting next to you. She keeps them on their toes, I'll tell you that. Thank you, Carol.
So, Tom, sorry, hopefully you can hear me? There you are, we can hear you.
We heard you, Tom.
Yeah, there you go. Go ahead, sir, while you got, while the microphone works, take advantage.
You know, I've been on this all day today, computer crashes, you know, memory, all this crazy stuff. So, you know, thank you for having me tonight, you know, this has been a huge priority of mine since I started at the Capitol, and, you know, Joe knows it, anytime I get a conversation with Joe, I'll, you know, I'll sell the train station. My first conversation with the governor, I backed him in a corner, gave him the train station, we need a station, and I tell you, I didn't like what I heard that night, and that's how far we've come. And we've done it because of bipartisan support, we've done it because of the council, the manager, our delegation, and the years and years, like, say, all the way back to Mary Lou Strom. It's amazing that we can't, we can't invite everybody back that's had something to do with this, and I'm not going to quit until we're all on the train taking a trip to Hartford. So again, we'll keep our chin up and we'll keep moving forward, and I'm really looking forward to jumping on that train with y'all. Maybe go all the way to Washington and go see Joe, give us a shout.
That's right.
You know, Representative Arnoni, and we will, when we have this groundbreaking, we expect it, we're, again, we're going to be very pro, I mean, we're going to be aggressive, and we are certainly going to invite anyone who had any remote, whoever it was, we're certainly going to invite them.
That's certainly going to be an epic day, and we look forward to it. And I would just like to say to everybody, Representative Arnoni, I've been talking to the whole delegation, and he was pushing and assisting in getting a meeting set with DOT before he was even sworn in. So this team is incredible, and I would just like to say, not as a comment about current events or times, that's beyond the scope of my job, but it really is amazing and a testament, as everybody here has said, when you work together collaboratively, united, you can get great things accomplished. It brings us together and shows all of the great things that we can do together, less talking about what divides us and more doing, like this group has done here this evening. So I thank our legislative delegation, I hope they'll stay on for comments from the council.
Yeah, if folks would, we'd like to make sure we give Council Representative Spazza, then Representative, I mean, excuse me, Counselor Spazza, then Counselor Mangini.
And I was with Tom 9 o'clock this morning.
All right, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to be brief, Mayor, but, Chris, and I just want to say this, having been brought up in Thompsonville and having worked for the town for 40 years, if you remember, and I know you remember, you and I would take walks in prior administrations, and we'd look at a problem, and then the next month, we'd walk again, and the same problem was there, and we wrote it down like it was this, something changed, and nothing changed. In my years as chief, when we had something in Thompsonville that was not a good thing, we would have people come forward to try to put committees together to raise Thompsonville. The end result is this, is that this was a collaborative effort, starting with Congressman Courtney. I remember when I was chief and I had issues with gang violence, he was there for us. I thanked him as chief, and today, Congressman, I thank you as a councilperson for the town of Enfield for being here for us. Same thing with Senator Kissel, Arnoni, Carol Hall, our state reps. Our town staff, I think, is the best I've ever seen in my 40 years, and I'll tell you what, Chris, it takes a team to bring the football down the field, and if you get close to that goal line, it doesn't count. It takes somebody of your caliber, Chris, to push that ball over the line. And if any council that I've seen in my lifetime could have accomplished any one of these things, let alone what we're going to get into in a little while about consolidation, it would be a tremendous event, and I've never been prouder of the town as a resident, and Chris, you're the spark plug to all this. So thank you very much, and Mr. Courtney be safe up there in Washington. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Counselor Mangini?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all the players from our federal, state, and local, and to Carol, we go back a long way, and you remember going to DC with me, with Mary Lou and others, and we lobbied, we lobbied hard, and we did get some money, but, you know, to your credit, Chris, Carl is absolutely correct. With your leadership, with our council, with our state, and our federal supporters, this is going to happen, and it is a wonderful, wonderful thing that this will happen, and thank you, Congressman Courtney, for your time and your diligence and dedication to our town of Enfield, and I'm just so very proud. But I just reflect back, Carol's right, it goes back to the 90s, a long time ago, but we survived it, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chris Sadi?
Yes, I would like to thank, I think I'm on, everybody can hear me? Okay, no?
You laid on Bob?
Yep, lights on, okay. Once again, to Congressman Courtney, to Senator Kissel, and Representatives, Mrs. Hall and Tom Arnoni, thank you for your hard work behind the scenes and really helping promote this huge project that is going to come to, you know, fruition, and really, really pleased with that. I can remember walking through the streets of Thompsonville with Senator Kissel and Mr. Arnoni, Chris Bronson, and the governor, and, you know, showing him the area, and with the mayor, Ludwig. It's quite an accomplishment to see that... It's quite, quite an accomplishment to see that with all the hard work, that all the department heads that put together this presentation and something that's going to be this beneficial to the town of Enfield. Because we, like everybody's been mentioning, this is something that's been talked about for years and years and years. And the nice thing about it is I love the idea, I love this plan of this platform. Instead of having this big, you know, big train station, because that's wasn't really a reality. But now this is. And I just want to, you know, extend my sincerity to everybody and in their hard work with this project. So, and once again, Congressman Courtney, stay safe also. And good to see you and Tom and Carol and John. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, congratulations on taking Bill Keiner's spot.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Deputy Mayor Susak?
I'm on set, Mike.
Okay, Council. Councilor Bosco, thank you.
Well, 12 years ago when we started it, looking at this, you know, I was dead set against the train station. I didn't want it. I thought it would bring in all kinds of problems. And over the years, we had professionals after professionals, studies after studies coming in. And they showed you the proof that a train station will revitalize an area. And I changed my mind. And I'm finally glad that I'll, I'm here today to be able to endorse this. And thanks to everyone back there that worked hard. Thank you. And Enfield really needs this.
Again, I just want in closing, thank everyone, you know, Congressman Courtney, Senator Kessel, Representative Arnon, Representative Hall, our entire staff for doing a great presentation, Town Council. And again, you have our commitment that whoever, when, when we have the groundbreaking, which will be in the very near future, everyone who wants to be invited will be invited. Again, this is, you know, I'll just end with this, you know, I think it was like a year ago, Congressman Courtney, myself and you were over at Stowe and we chatted about the vision of Stowe, what we were thinking of doing over there. And again, when we say we're building partnerships, we mean it. We were trying to build partnerships with every level of government, private and public sector. And again, the credit should be to everyone because it takes, you can tell, it does take all levels of government to actually work together to be this, hopefully be this successful. Our goals are, you know, again, if you have never been to the northern part of the Connecticut River and seen one of those, you know, those American eagles fly, you're missing out. It's a great experience. We're hoping to be able to do, build upon that. And so again, I think this is for us, just the beginning. We're proud of what we presented tonight. We hope you folks enjoyed it. And we hope you're not strangers to our meetings where you're more than welcome anytime. And we always, like I said, we always have special guests. We'll find time for anybody who would like to come. And, you know, again, with that, I mean, I got, out of respect for Congressman Courtney calling in from DC, if you have any final words, sir, I'll give you the floor and then we'll close.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I think you're, you know, bringing up the visit a year ago with the work that's being done over at the children's, you know, sort of comprehensive center there is absolutely spot on. Because, you know, there's just, you know, getting that synergy, make sure that the resources are going to be there, that the technical assistance is going to be there and the buy-in, the community is there. And, you know, if you try and do it, you know, from, you know, Washington, you know, just decreeing it from above, that doesn't work. And same thing with Hartford. You've got to really have everybody sort of, you know, in the same baseline and real time together. And again, you're, you guys did it. I mean, I, you know, we, I look forward to the groundbreaking and, and I would just sort of like to end by saying Chris Bronson is a really special person. I've known him for many years, long before either one of us. I was in public office and his, you know, just dynamic charisma and, you know, just imagination is just really special and the town's really lucky to have him, so.
See, that's what happens when you retire. You actually don't retire in the town of Enfield, you just keep working. That's what happens.
No, and I saw you gave him an extension, mayor, and that was a really smart move.
Where were you before I renegotiated, Joe? No.
Yeah.
So in closing, Chris, if, I mean, I want to give you.
I appreciate it and I mean it. You can get a lot done when you work together. And it makes it a lot easier when you surround yourself with the best and the brightest people. And that's what we've done on the town staff. That's what we have in place in our legislative delegation and with this council. And we look forward, there's still hard work left ahead, but we're committed to it. We're going to put our shoulder into it. And as I say, we welcome everybody to come, I march and hear the DOT when they make their presentation of the final design and answer any questions that people will have. Thank you all. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Have a great night. Thank you for coming and again, you're welcome anytime. Thank you.
I am honored.
So we have five minutes, quick recess. We'll start the general meeting in five minutes. So folks, you want to, we have five minutes. Good evening, everyone. This is the regular, regular portion of our meeting, Enfield Town Council, regular meeting on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. It is seven o'clock and the prayer, Councilor Hemler.
So I chose a Bible verse. This is King Solomon was communicating with God. Second Chronicles, chapter seven, verses 12 to 14. "And the Lord appeared to him at night and said, 'I have heard your prayer and I have chosen this place for myself as a temple for sacrifices. When I shut up the heavens, so that there is no rain or command locusts to devour the land, or send a plague among my people. If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and I will forgive their sin and I will heal their land.' Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
Suzanne, you're, this is your last roll call. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilor Hemler.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Mueller.
Here.
Councilor Riley.
Here.
Councilor Sparazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Here.
Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Councilor Bosco. I know he's there. Councilor Sikala.
Here.
Councilor Crissati.
Here.
There's 11 members present that are absent.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item four, in case of a fire, the fire evacuation announcement. We have the doors in the back, the exit in the back of the, of the chambers. Please do orderly left or right from where you sit. Or we have the doors to my left. Go out those doors. There's doors to your left, right into the hallway. You go down the stairs and again, orderly out into the parking lot in case of a fire. Moving on to item five, minutes of the preceding meeting. Special meeting, January 4th, 2020, to have a motion to approve. By Councilor Mueller. Seconded by Councilor Riley. Any additions, deletions or subtractions or additions? Hearing number Shaw Hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstention, 11 in favor, Suzanne, zero against. To have a motion to approve the regular meeting of January 4th, 2020.
So moved.
By Councilor Mangini, seconded by Councilor Mueller. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing number Shaw Hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstention, we have 11 in favor, zero against. Special guests, we don't have any. We, we just had our six o'clock meeting. Item seven, public communications. We don't have anyone currently, unless Chief, you like to speak at the public communication. Moving on to item eight, council communications. Do any councils have any communications? Councilor Mangini, then Councilor Riley.
Just one quick comment through our mayor to our town manager. We're noticing in town, all different areas, Broadbrook Road, Abbey Road, rail, railroad tracks and the ties seem to be getting some attention, getting some movement. And we're getting, I'm getting inquiries as to whether the tracks are coming back to life. I mean, is there some business that's moving in the railway direction or is there something going on that maybe the town should be made aware of?
We can address that in the course. Donald Nunes is aware, the chief is nodding his head. There's been some, there's no grand scheme, you know, underway, but there have been some replacements in areas and we'll get a report and supply.
Okay, because it could be a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Riley, then Councilor Crissati.
Okay, so I know we got a big agenda tonight and we're going to be doing a lot of really neat things tonight. So I just wanted to make kind of one comment about the whole consolidation thing as a whole. Because I was doing some math and it kind of came out better than I thought it was going to come out. So I looked at the presentation again and the one that we got with all the nuts and bolts in it. And just kind of for the public and anybody else who's interested. If we are going to save $2,275,000 in repairs to those three buildings. And then if we get 819,800 in a sale, then that's going to be $3,94,800 plus $1,060,000 in cost avoidance for five years, which is $4,154,800. Then if we get tax revenue over five years for the three properties of $320,000, that's $4,474,800. So if you subtract that by the $3,028,339 we'll spend tonight, over five years, we're going to save and avoid $1,446,461,000. So basically, if you divide that by five years, that's $289,000, $292,000 every year, I think is really cool. So I just wanted to put that out there, try to break it down for everybody because I had to go back and forth and I don't know if the regular public wanted, you know, go through all that hard work, but I just want to say thanks for putting all of this together and getting it going because I think this is going to be really great for Enfield.
Thank you. Councilor Crissati, then Councilor Sikala.
Yeah, good evening. A couple of days ago, I, I sent out an email to everyone with a proposed resolution that we discussed at our caucus and, you know, to be added to the miscellaneous part of our agenda tonight. But I do understand the principles that, or the, you know, in terms of presenting a resolution at leadership and I thoroughly understand that. But we just, you know, I just want to state that this is an opportunity, you know, for our council to unify together, to support each other and show our residents, you know, that this resolution that's going to be condemning the insurrection that occurred on January 6th on 2021 on the federal Capitol by the Set Insurgents. And I appreciate that, you know, in setting that up and having discussion that it will be brought up at leadership next time and it will be presented to the council and to be open for consideration and discussion. And I appreciate that.
Yep, exactly. Next meeting, you're correct. Thank you.
But I, I appreciate that. I do, I did send out an amendment that was sent to everyone and I have a copy here that just kind of outlines, and I think it's something that, that will be great for the town. This is something that, you know, we always say that Enfield does things correct and I think this would be a good opportunity for the council. I just have one other quick mention in regard to our, just want to mention that the Enfield Safe Harbor Warming Center now is located at St. Pat's Church. And because of the pandemic that we're in, it's only open on Wednesdays and Sundays from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And it opened up January 3rd and it's going to be open up until March 27th. And it opened up January 3rd, and it's going to be open up until March 27th. But I just wanted to just let everybody know, I don't want anybody to forget about, you know, that we do have that warming center also. All right, so one other thing I just want to mention. I did receive a few phone calls from some residents in the Thompsonville area in regards to transportation to their adult ed programs. The bus stops at seven o'clock, and some of the adult ed programs for adult basic education, the ABE program and the GED programs, a lot of people, or a lot of the residents come from downtown Thompsonville, and sometimes the, well, the bus stops at seven o'clock, but the classes go from six to nine, so it's preventing people from attending these classes, and it's something that's of need. And I've been requested to ask through the mayor to the town manager if there is a couple of rooms available that they could possibly use to help some of these students get their diplomas. They used to use the basement of Pearl Street Library, but now because of the quarantine, they put the books down there to quarantine the books before they put them back on the shelves. So that was just a request. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sikala, then Councilor Bosco, then Councilor Hemler.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a couple of general comments. People who have looked at our agenda see that we have a lot of resolutions, 13 to be exact, on building consolidations and changes that we are suggesting and voting on tonight. And I might make some individual comments when we get to each of them or some of them, but I want to give credit where credit is due, and that is to our town manager and our town staff for doing this work. They're really the ones, and I know we would love to take credit if everybody loves it, but this is really not the council's doing. This is the town manager and the town staff, who, this was their insight, this was their vision, and I commend them on a lot of their hard work. People don't always like change. I think it's scary for some. I think we need to give it a chance. I think these are some great ideas that Chris has, and I really do suggest that people who have a lot of questions, and I know people do, because I've been contacted about some of them, that they do go online, look at the building consolidation presentation, I think there's two versions on there, and read through the question and answers that are also online. In addition to the presentation and the few people that asked questions at our last meeting, there's probably, what, 15 to 20 question and answers online that can really help give people some insight and answers to questions that I know that they're also asking. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Bosco, then Councilor Hemler.
183 years ago, the Fort Town Fair had its first fair, if you want to call it a fair, it was an oxen pull, in Summers. 1839, Daniel Gowdy and the Wallop School of the Wallop Area, and a few other people met, and they put together their first fair. And it was a little bit different than it is now, but it was an oxen pull and stuff like that. Henry, I should say, Daniel Gowdy in 1839, Henry Abbey, also of Wallop. 1960, the fairgrounds purchased property and they were to build their fair. They'd had their fair there since 1960. We have five families, 11 individuals, that signed a cease and desist, more or less. They're going for an appeal of the Summers Planning and Zoning, or ZBA meeting. I'm just asking people, read the Facebook pages, read the papers. We need help from the public. There's going to be a GoFundMe page that's going on to help with the legal fees, and you know, it's really sad, because Enfield really had a lot to do with it. We were one of the first three towns to start it. And it's been 183 years that this has been going on, and it's really sad that, you know, five families, 11 people, could cease the fair. And so we're asking for help from the public. Get on the Facebook page, please donate, we have legal expenses. Save the fair, because I'm going to tell you, when that fair goes, it's the last in the area for our kids to see what agriculture is. You know, I've been a director down there for almost 20 years now, and you see the kids coming up there. They never seen a cow or a goat, or it may be just the first time they can really get up there and pet it. And when you change something like that, it's really pretty sad, because agriculture is going away up here in Connecticut, and when it's gone, that's how we eat. And you know, you listen to the other side, and they're saying, well, we only want to stop the other things that are going on in the fair. Well, they've been going on since 1960 also. And if you don't have the other venues going in, like we rent the properties out on occasion during the summers, if we don't have them, then we don't have enough money. The fair does not make enough money every year to be able to sustain itself. You know, we rent the grounds, we do different things, and that's how we pay and keep the fair going. And this year, we didn't have a fair. And, you know, we still have the same bills for the electricity and the insurance and stuff that doesn't go away. And now we have legal fees to try to save the fair for all the public. And you know, it may be the Summers Fair, but really, it was the Enfield Fair. That fair used to go from farm to farm in each town, and it'd really be a sad time to lose that fair. So if someone can donate on the Facebook page, if you know people in Summers, get the word out, even people in Enfield, because more people know about it, maybe things will straighten out, because if we are ruled against in that zoning board of appeals, the fair probably will cease, and it'll be a real shame. And, you know, we need your help. So this is a plea. Please look at the Facebook page, if you guys can donate on the page, for our GoFundMe page, anything you can, but it's getting pretty dire there. And without a fair last year, there are no funds. We usually keep one year of things in the bank, so when you start spending away on that, there may not even be enough to start the next year's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hemler.
Through the mayor to the town manager, great job with the presentation. I mean, wow. To you and your staff, you guys are just, you're just doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mueller.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move items E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, and T to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Oh, she made a suspend rules and move.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Mangini. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none by Shaw Hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, 11 in favor, zero against. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Susak? Hearing none. And anyone else, any comments before we close? Again, Chris, you know, professional job. I know the staff put a lot of work into it. You know, I know some of them are still listening. Great job. Again, it's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be professional, we're trying to be, we're trying to, we're committed to excellence, and it shows, and so thank you and your staff. And, you know, again, I'm sure you'll talk in the town manager report, but I just want to make sure that, again, I know that they put a ton of work into that, and it was well thought out, a little different, a little unique, which is great, which is really all about Enfield. And I want to just say, speaking of that, some good news, our high school kids are going, are trying to compete in the winter, basketball, hockey, and I can't remember the other sport. Again, if you're allowed to, within the limits, go cheer those kids on. I mean, they've been through, we don't realize how tough it's been on our kids the last year. You know, all the different things with schools and missing the sports that they love, or having different versions of the sport that they love. Get a chance, support the kids. Great news, at least at this point, we're going to be having some sports at the high school, and I mean, I hope everyone keeps that in mind, and go out and support the kids of our town to go out and compete in obviously very difficult circumstances. So that's it. Moving on to the town manager report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What some of the councilors are alluding to is, and I would recommend that you go on to the manager's report tomorrow, we had a six to seven special presentation on an update on the Enfield train station, so it was very informative, and I ask that you go and watch it, and I will just state to stay tuned that the Department of Transportation and their representatives will be coming to Enfield to the council to give a presentation and answer questions at one of our March meetings, and then they will have a series of public hearings. But just so that you understand that it looks like Enfield will have a train station, and the timeframe has been accelerated, and I think that's good news. And I will tell you, my staff always says, you know, boss, we're just doing our job, and they are, but I want you all to know, I think that presentation and all the presentations we do, you can see their heart and soul goes into it. Anytime a director makes a presentation before this council, they go above and beyond. The chief of police, Public Works, library, all of them take it personally, and they believe in their job, and they believe in this town, and I think it shows in the final product. So thank you all. Just a couple of things. I thank Councilor Riley. I agree with your math. I think it's important for people to know that consolidation is cost savings, and that's one of the reasons we approved it. Not only that, but it's very efficient, and I think your numbers are pretty close. The finance director will run them, but that's why we proposed it, because there's real.
Heard him doing some math when she was doing a math.
He likes that sort of thing, and it's real. We're transparent, and I endorse, as Councilor Sikala said, to go on the website, we have both the presentation we made before council, the nuts and bolts presentation that goes into great detail about consolidation, which is about 30 pages, and also the questions and answers, questions from various councilors and the answers that are more in-depth that we gave. So we appreciate the councilors' inquiries. I think they were very helpful in answering some of the questions, as Councilor Sikala said, people have out there. Change is good, but change is different, and sometimes people are a little bit afraid of it. I think it's a good thing, and we were very cautious. I just want you to know that we're very sensitive to historic preservation and in our history, and I think that's why the Alcorn School is going to be such a beautiful campus and gem, because previous councils saw the merit and wanted to save it and preserve it, and now look what we're able to do because we retained it. Likewise, the Santa Daubert School, this council later in the program is going to refurbish that and make it available for tournament basketball and sports and cultural arts and theater. Again, because this council saw the wisdom and wanted to preserve the historic nature of it. It's just sometimes the time does move on, and I will just touch base, because it was mentioned earlier about the strand. Unfortunately, we'll tell you, it's in very, very dire straits. The cost of removing it is going to be almost $1 million, just taking it down. That would not even be a starting cost to go in and try to rehab it and remediate the toxic, the mold, and other things that have just ravaged it over the course of time. It's interesting, when I was acting town manager in '05, I took a tour, because you know I like ideas, I have an imagination, I thought maybe we could save it. Even then, 16 years ago, it was badly damaged, and it is even worse today. Public Works, and we posted around it for people, we didn't want people trespassing, we don't want them breathing the toxic air inside because of the mold and the mildew, so it is really beyond hope. I know there were those committed to it, but I've been contacted by some who are actually involved in saving the strand and have said, the time has come to move on, and we'll make everybody proud, and we'll replace it with something great. And I'll tell you, I always, just like we're going back to the Alcorn to replace the basketball courts, and we're doing it because council's going to invest that there and at Santa Daubert's, much like cultural, the idea there was to have a cultural center, to have theater. Well, this council has supported the opera house players. They support this plan, and also, we're going to have cultural, and we're going to have a theater over at the Santa Daubert's. So we just don't forget the past. We enhance it, we preserve it, we embrace it, we celebrate it, but at some point, you have to stop throwing good money after bad. A few people have asked, and I am different. I'm going to tell you this. Today, I think it's interesting, maybe the Mavericks have it in town managers, because there's many less of the gray-haired ones, they call it the Silver Tsunami, they're all retiring. But when you look around, and I know people who are in the business, I've been contacted, know what they're looking for? Out of the box, a different philosophy, not public administration, not cookie cutter, not the way we used to do it. These are very trying times, and as we see from the pandemic, you never know what's going to be coming around the corner. You have to have people and staff that can think differently. And over the last two and a half years going on, three in May, that's what I've tried to do. We've brought people in that have that philosophy, look differently at these problems, and come up with solutions. That's why we have the consolidation plan. You can't do that during the short cycle of the budget. And I knew that, sitting there for years, saying, oh my goodness, they're making these huge investments of infrastructure decisions, everybody's slap happy, it's midnight or one o'clock, they don't even really know what's being presented, and they vote on it, and then we move on, and everybody would take the summer off, and that was it. We brought a different philosophy. We look at budgeting every month. We look at capital improvement and process and operations and infrastructure every month, every day. So our plan and why we did it the way we did it, we wanted to do garden plots and basketball courts outside the budget, because if we had waited for the budget, the summer would have come and gone of 2021, and none of that would have been done. You looked at it, you endorsed it, those things will be reality this summer. Likewise, with the consolidation plan, joint committees, others have looked at for years in staff, what's the future? And I told you, it was a daunting task, like Joey said, it spins your head. But the BL study came out, we worked with that with staff, we came up with this consolidation plan, I think it's a good one, it's going to save a lot of money over time, it'd be more efficient. I couldn't do that in one or two nights during the budget. It wouldn't have the dignity of the time or the attention for you to look at it. So we did it this way. And that way, when the budget comes up in a few weeks, we're going to focus on it like a laser. We're going to be able to come and talk about projects like the transfer station, the dog pound, operations, vehicles, things that we need to run and operate government, jobs and descriptions, and maybe if we need new, you know, assistance in some of the departments. I think that, my personal philosophy is, that's what the budget be, operational and how you're going to run it. Bigger issues like this, one-time garden plots, one-time basketball courts, or consolidation efforts should be done in a different venue. That's just my humble opinion, and I think it's been successful, and I appreciate your patience, because as genus has changed sometimes, is uncomfortable, people are not used to it. But we work every month, we just don't do the budget, take the summer off, and start again in the fall. So that's kind of the philosophy behind it. Fiscally, I have to tell you, we must strike now while the iron is hot. We are in good shape fiscally, because this council and previous councils, in fact, all the councils, when I sat in that chair for 31 years, were fiscally responsible and conservative. They were great stewards of the town's money. We are in a unique opportunity and time now to get the benefit of that, to invest in infrastructure, to invest in projects that we haven't over the past years, and yet still hopefully have a level mill rate next year, which will allow us to then invest again in infrastructure for roads and roofs. I'll tell you, I've been on the calls with John, the Standard and Poor's, and we've done very well. Because we went out and renegotiated those bonds, we saved millions. We renegotiated and went out to bid on insurance, we saved millions over the next few years. That's put us in a position to be where we are today, to make these expenditures for the future, because Standard and Poor's and these rating agencies want to see that you're investing, investing in your infrastructure. And if you don't, and it's deferred, and Don, I know I'm singing to the choir out there, then you see the roofs, and the mold, and the repairs, and the roads, and the potholes, and the complaints, and it's too late to play catch-up. We've been aggressive. This is a chance for Enfield not only to catch up, but to leap ahead for the next couple of decades. Financially, how can we do it? I have to tell you, even after these expenditures, as Councilor Riley talked about, which may be around 4.2 million, they're all going to pay for themselves, so that's pretty well neutral. But even if they didn't, our policy from the town council is that we must maintain a 9% fund balance, all right? 9% is of the total of your approved budgetary expenditures, which in this town is $146 million, give or take. That was our budget last year. So we're supposed to maintain 9% of that. After we make these expenditures, which also not only include the consolidation, but include all of the body cams and the upgrade that we did for the police department, and the three roofs, if you include those as well, we don't have 9% in our fund balance after those expenditures. We have double that. We have 18%. I don't want that, I don't want to talk about it, all right? I just want you to know, and our citizens to know, that we're in very, very good shape financially, and a couple of years ago, when the state, the previous governor, looked around and said, well, how are we going to balance the budget? Well, let's look at the fund balances in towns like Enfield that did a really good job, let's take more from them. I want to put it into basketball courts, garden plots, schools, pools, roads, and roofs, and I don't want anybody taking our hard-earned money. Enfield, you have to understand when people say, when we get, we've been so aggressive for grants and looking for money in state and federal, and people say, well, it's one pocket or the other. It's not. Enfield, we pay a lot of money. You heard earlier, the. You heard earlier this evening, we have 20,000 laborers out of a population of 43. They pay a lot to the state in income tax. What's the return? What do we get back? And I'm here to tell you, up till now, three years ago, we didn't get a return on what we were paying in our income tax. Likewise, there's a ratio, what Connecticut, what we pay in our federal income tax and what we get back from federal. The Northeast and Connecticut in particular, just as an example, you pay a dollar in federal income tax, Charlotte, Connecticut gets back overall for all of our money, maybe a quarter. There's other states that get a buck fifty or $2. It's time we're at the front of the line. It's time that we got what we deserve. We've worked hard, and that's what this plan is about. We're in a unique position. I thank you for your support, and I think this is going, as I've said, we're looking at a lot of things and doing a lot of things, but this is going to put us in good stead for decades to come. So I just want you to know that we're in good financial shape, and this will make us and put us in better financial shape going forward.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the town manager? Deputy Mayor Suzak? Make sure I don't forget you. I know. Didn't we mandate no Bruin sign? Just joking. Moving on. Thank you, sir. And moving on to item 11, excuse me, item 10, town attorney report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor, briefly, two related issues. I had announced at a meeting recently that in 2021, we plan to do some training for the volunteers who serve on boards and commissions and possibly town staff on recurring legal issues like freedom of information. And the feedback I heard back was, well, that'd be great, but been there, done that. And in fact, town staff is quite proficient in dealing with FOI responses. They know the law, they respond. But the second related issue is that I heard from some of the hard-working volunteers who serve on land use boards and commissions, that there are recurring issues that they see, not related to FOI, that they would like some guidance on. And one person suggested there had been in the past something called the Council of Chairs, where the chairs of the various land use commissions would get together on occasion and meet with staff and perhaps the town attorney and talk about developments in the law, policy procedure, not any specific projects, of course, but just more of a general nature so that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. I know that you all in the council have plenty of meetings, too many meetings already. So I thought initially, when I heard this, council of chairs meant the land use bodies. Now I'm being told, well, maybe at one point, it did involve either the mayor or someone from the council. So I just throw this out there. We're looking at this, and in the next couple of weeks, I'll be reaching out to the volunteers and through the town manager's office and through you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll come up with something that makes sense. But it sounds like an idea that has some merit, something that had been used in the past, and it would be a way, if nothing else, even if we just have one organizational meeting like that, we come away from that, and then the town attorney knows, well, these are the legal issues that really are not getting enough traction, not being talked about enough, and we can plan from there and do some legal training for the volunteers and the town staff if necessary. So I throw that out there.
Appreciate it. And again, I'd be open to, when you look through this, if anyone in the council, we could even rotate. It doesn't have to be me. I mean, I think everyone needs, no matter what your background is, to understand land use law if you're going to be on a council. So again, I'm more than willing, if anyone is interested, when you get to the point, we can ask people if they would want to rotate. I'm OK with that. I mean, again, I want to make sure that, again, that everyone understands exactly what's going on in the town, and they have the opportunity to participate. So I'm willing, if other councilors at that point would like to do it as well, we can rotate. Doesn't always have to be me. And so it also gives you folks an opportunity to kind of chair a meeting as well, to see if you like to do it. So I'm more than willing to do that, because I think it's helpful, not only for staff too, to make sure everyone understands what we're doing from a development perspective. So I think that's fair. I mean.
Excellent. So details, we'll try to formulate this and keep you posted as it goes along, and we'll keep you updated, and feel free to reach out if you have any questions. And other than that, if there aren't questions now, I'll cede my time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the town attorney? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Item 11, is there any reports of any special committees? Counselor Crissati?
Yes, I'd like to report. I went to a meeting on the commission on aging this past week, and I really have to commend this group and all the committees that are associated with this particular commission. They must have like 12 different committees that, you know, service, you know, and a lot of them, for the seniors, it's really, I have to commend them. There's just a couple of things of mention that I would like to state here. One is the senior home repair program. The program's not going to start probably until March. You know, it's supposed to start around then, but they're actually looking probably towards summertime, midsummer, before any of the projects that are going to start going there due to the pandemic. So realistically, we're looking, they're looking at June and July to possibly start up any small and minor repairs. But if anybody, any seniors that are out there and they're listening and they need some assistance, please still please get in contact with Tim Slade. The annual symposium that they have every particular year, they didn't do it last year. That program is going to be suspended until 2022. So we're looking, they're looking at making sure that safety is number one. The senior living TV program, which is hosted by Martha McLeod, will beginning to air in February, and they're going to be discussing vaccination programs, nutrition and exercise programs, and you're going to get updates from Patrice Sulick from North Central Health District. And then they're going to be calling in people from the State Health Department to help with and assist seniors. There's a couple of other committees that I just want to mention, the grandparents raising grandchildren. All of their appointments that they've been having through Amy Morales have been virtual appointments. So if there is anybody that needs to contact Amy, they can do it through Social Services. The Blue Book, once again, is located at Social Services, the Food Shelf, the Library at various locations. If anybody really needs one, please contact Cindy at Social Services. I also just want to mention, and this is the last thing that I'm going to state, because they do so much. The commission would like to recognize Cindy from Social Services and her staff and everybody in their department for their efforts and helping the commission and the great relationship. They never had a relationship with a director like they have now. And they wanted me to say something in public to everybody. So, you know, that's a testament, once again, to the hiring of somebody that's really has taken to this position. And very impressed. And also, they also want to recognize Jason from the, Jason Neely from the Library Department, and the way that he communicates, and Sheila Grady from the Senior Center, and Mary Keller through Recreation. They really have communicated very well with the seniors and all the different programs that they have. It's fantastic. So I told them that I would give them a shout-out to everybody, that they really need to be recognized, and that the commission really appreciates everything that they do. And one last thing about the Circuit Breaker Program starts February 1st, and it goes through May 15th. OK? That's it.
Counselor Ungary, then Counselor Sacala.
I just wanted to add that I'm also on the Commission on Aging with Counselor, and I just wanted to add that they're utilizing those walking trails back behind the Senior Center, and that's been very popular. They're getting some fresh air, they're getting some exercise, and so that's been successful. Also, the Blue Books are available at the Enfield Express. So seniors that are concerned about that, they don't even have to get out of their car, they can just go through the drive-through and pick up that book with the wealth of information in it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Sacala.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick update on JFK renovation. I know when people drive by, they see a lot of work being done there. Just a couple of big points. The, obviously, the work continues on the auditorium, new roofing in the yellow and black wings, work on the new kitchen and plumbing in the locker rooms. But the big takeaway for tonight will be that Blue Wing, the classrooms, lighting, ceilings, and windows are all being finished, and their hope is to have Blue Wing done and ready for the students by after February break, to hopefully move them in after the February break. So that would be, that'd be awesome. So it is plugging along and going well.
Thank you for that update. That's great news. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Bosco.
Yeah, I just, Gina reminded me, when you're heading north on Raffia Road, the lights that light up the area, the bullpen for all the equipment at JFK, the light comes off, and it actually gets in your eyes for just a few seconds. They need to move it just a little bit off to the side. Thank you.
Any other reports, special committees? Hearing none, we move on to old business, item 12. Item A1 stays on the table. Item A2, Commission on Aging, do I have a motion to remove from the table?
Some move.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Riley. All those in favor moving from the table, I show hands. Opposed, abstentions, 11 in favor, zero against. Do I have a nomination, please?
I do. Marlene Hodginsky.
Nomination made. Second by Counselor Riley. Do I have a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Ungary. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, abstention, 11 in favor, Suzanne, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Um, four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Marlene Hodginsky.
There you go.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Marlene Hodginsky.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. We move up to the top of page two under old business items three through 15. Again, we have no nominations. On top of page 30, 16 and 17 remain on the table. Item B on page three, 1 through 11, town manager appointments, we have none. Moving up to the top of page four, town manager appointments 12 through 16, we have none. Item C1, P&amp;Z Commission-appointed CROG representative, do I have a nomination, please?
Yes, Frank Alimo.
No, no, this is, this is a, it's Ginny. Ginny is the.
Oh, sorry.
This would be for Virginia Higley?
Okay, made by Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini, for Virginia Higley is the first. Do I have a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Crissati, second by Counselor Mueller. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions, 11 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Again, this is for Virginia Higley for C1. Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Virginia Higley.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Ginny Higley.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Ginny Higley.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. C2, again, CROG alt, Planning and Zoning Commission Alternative, do I have a nomination, please?
Yes, Frank Alimo.
Frank Alimo. Second by Counselor Riley. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Some move.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Srazza. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions, 11 in favor, zero against. Any discussion, excuse me, on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Frank Alimo.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Frank Alimo.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item D, Discussion Resolution of the MOU of the Fire District, stays on the table. Moving to item 13, new business. Item A, Consent Agenda, there is none. Item B under new business, appointments by the town council, there are none. Item C under new business, appointments by the town manager, there are none. Item D under new business, for P&amp;Z Commission-appointed, council approve, again, there are none. Item E, Resolution, Discussion Resolution, Request to Transfer Funds for the Family Resource Center of $29,832. Do I have a motion to remove from the table? By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Ungary. So Suzanne, I want to make sure, I have to make the motion to remove, and then we just simply vote on it because it's new business, correct?
Yes, in fact, it wasn't, yes, you're fine.
So Chris, I know this is just something that's not.
Yeah, we'll revisit this later. It's a grant-funded position. We'll talk about it later, funds are available. It isn't prudent to pursue it this time, so we just ask that be removed from the agenda.
So the motion is made to remove. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini. Was that in favor?
Abstain.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, one abstention.
Just for the, we just removed it from the table, we're not approving it. That's what we just voted on, just so we went, sorry for that wasn't clear. Item F, Discussion Resolution, Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Sign a Real Item F, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the town manager to sign a real estate purchase contract on behalf of the town of Enfield for the sale of 92 Post Office Road. Whereas the town of Enfield owns a building lot located in 92...
Mr. Mayor, that's staying on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, look at that, I jumped the gun. Item F, I was pretty good reading, it just stays on the table. I should have asked first. See what happens when you assume?
You were testing me.
Exactly, sorry about that, you did tell me that. So we move up to page five, items for discussion. Item A, consent agenda, again, there is none. Item B, appointments under town council, again, none. Item C under items for discussion, appointments by the town manager, there are none. Item D, P and Z commission appointed, council approve, again, there are none. E through T has been moved to miscellaneous. So now we're on item fifteen, miscellaneous for item E. Discussion resolution for the transfer of funds for the police department DUI grant of $87,513.67. Where it's resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. To the DUI enforcement program of $87,513.67. From the DUI enforcement program of $87,513.67. Certified that the above funds are available on January 11th, 2021 by our director of finance, John Wilcox, and approved by the town manager, Christopher Bronson. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Riley. Chief, you've been very patient, please, you're welcome to come up.
Sir, I actually don't have anything.
Oh, you don't have it, okay, sorry.
I'm on a later item, I'm going to speak to it.
Basically, he's available for questions, but this is a grant that we've done yearly. It's very appropriate, and I would just say that our police department is very vigilant in making sure our streets are safe, and even in times such as these today, this grant even becomes more important. They're committed to it, they have a lot of other resources, they work regionally, and it's a very aggressive enforcement for the safety of our citizens and our friends and neighbors. So I commend them for that, and this is again, the same grant that we've applied for, for a number of years.
Just wanted to make sure, if you want to comment, you're more than welcome.
Thanks sir, unless there are questions, I'm on a later item.
Any questions on the grant or for the chief? I think you're off the hook. I agree, this has been a very successful program, and I think we've done it for a number of years now, so it's great that we're applying for the... We actually are receiving the money for the grant, correct? So we're actually receiving the money, good. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
I'm sorry?
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne, moving on to item F, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, request to transfer funds for the town building consolidation, Alcorn remodel, excuse me, of $639. Six hundred thirty nine, $639, 670, okay. $639, $670, excuse me, apologize for that. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From the general fund and from the capital nonrecurring fund, $639, 670,000. To the general fund, Alcorn remodeled fund of $639, 670. Certified that the above funds are available as of January 12th, 2021 by John Wilcox, our director of finance. Approved by Christopher Bronson, our town manager. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Riley. I don't know, John or Chris, I mean, I know we...
And that's why we did it in the way we did, because we gave the first presentation, we then gave all the nuts and bolts, and that's why we opened it up, so councils would be able to have a chance to ask questions, which they did. So we were hopeful, I mean, staff is available, but that really isn't the purpose when we get to this stage, it's to move on. If there was a real paramount question, we could try to have staff answer it, but the purpose was, at the last meeting, to garner questions that we could post, to then move on. The cover memo, I think, clearly articulates the purpose of this one, this is one of the larger ones, for Alcorn. Basically, you know, for moving youth services and recreation out of LeMania and into the Alcorn, and then the ripple effect at the annex. And this is senior center for...
Just want to make sure, Donald or John, just want to make sure you sent your on, if you have any comments you want to make, just want to make sure.
I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm all set as well.
Thank you.
Basically to move youth services into Alcorn, youth services and social services into Alcorn.
Thank you sir, any questions of Counselor Bosco?
Yeah, I just, it's more of a statement. This is something that the people have been asking for, for a long time. When you get down and see it, you know, I've read a bunch of comments where people were against it, but you know, every argument they had, there's another good part of this. And this is going to push the town forward, I believe it's money well spent, and I'm talking everything on the agenda, so I don't have to speak at each one of them. But you know, what people also don't realize is, in the past few years, we've been selling property. So all these properties we sell all go into a kitty, and this is how we also get things done. And these properties that we have here, when we finally get to sell the ones we have, that money's going to go back. And this is really going to move the town forward, and you know, from all these people, years after years said, you guys are doing nothing, everything stays stagnant, well, you know, they're doing something. The problem was, it just wasn't the time to say what was happening. And you'll see, it's a very robust idea, and it's going to pay well off into the future, and make things much more efficient, and much better in general, and that's what everyone's been asking. And this is what staff did for us. I mean, it took a lot of work, and I just, I'm going to support all of these, and I think it's a great thing, and thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, to that end, so I don't have to, you know, repeat myself at each item, it is part of the one consolidation plan. I would say, and we're sensitive to remarks and people get some feedback, a lot of it is not based on what the plan really is. So I would endorse again, and recommend that people go to our town manager website, from our last town council meeting, and see the presentation. It's not only visual, it shows all of the buildings, shows all the square footage of where we were, where we're moving to, and the reasoning behind it. And then the 30-page document about all the specifics and in the weeds information, and the diagrams, and showing what's actually being done at each and every site, and for what reason is there. And then as Counselor Sacala said, all of the insightful questions that council asked since the last meeting, they are all there with answers. So I would just endorse, I think people sometimes talk about it because they hear from a friend, this is what's going on, but the best source of information, we've been transparent, and the entire plan is there. So please, 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 if you have questions, read that first, and if you have any other questions, contact us. It's a work in progress, and we're always available to answer it, and I would rather have people have the right information and the correct facts, so that they are able to support the plan. Because the council does have all the facts, you come from disparate backgrounds, and you all support unanimously, and I think that speaks volumes to your constituents. So please, go online, go to the manager's site, look at the presentations we did, and all of the information that's available there for you, and I think you'll be favorably impressed. Thank you.
Thank you sir, any other questions from the town council? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne, moving on to item G, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, request for transfer of funds for town building consolidation for the Alcorn parking lot, $150,867. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From the general fund and capital nonrecurring of $150,867, to the Alcorn parking lot line item of $150,867. Certified that the above funds are available as of January 12th, 2021 by our director of finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our town manager, Christopher Bronson. By Counselor Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Sacala. Any questions, Counselor Riley?
I did just have one question, when I was going through all the numbers today, I saw the numbers for the Alcorn parking lot was $200,000, and not that I don't mind saving money, but I just wanted to know, what do we subtract to get to the 15867? Where does that difference come in?
John, did you hear that, I think that question was for you, sir. John?
The amount for the Alcorn parking lot, in one of the detailed slides, I believe it was like $129,000. That was included with the Alcorn remodel as well, and there was a contingency piece to it, so we added that contingency piece that would be on the parking lot itself, to get to the 150. Not sure where the $200,000 number that you are referring to came from.
Well, because I saw it in the slides that we had, but if, I'm okay, we don't have to spend $200,000, I'm okay with 150, I was just wondering where the numbers were, that's all, but thank you.
Counselor Riley, the $200,000, we had the basketball court included with that.
Oh, okay.
And so when we subtracted it out, then we added the contingency back in, and we added the total of $115,000.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne, moving on to item H, discussion resolution, request to transfer funds for town building consolidation, senior center renovation of $20,500. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From the general fund and from the capital nonrecurring fund of $20,500, to the senior center renovation construction line item of $20,500. Certified that the above funds are available as of January 12th, 2021 by our director of finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson. By Counselor Muller, and a second by Counselor Mangini. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne, moving on to item I, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, request to transfer funds for town building consolidation, the annex refurbished of $25,080. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From the general fund and capital nonrecurring fund of $25,080, to the annex refurbished construction line item of $25,080. Certified that the above funds are available as of January 12th, 2021 by John Wilcox, our director of finance, and approved by Christopher Bronson, our town manager. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Crisati. Any questions?
And you'll perhaps just, I could add a little commentary so that individuals know. The last one basically was to do some minor improvements at the senior center to move the transportation department over there, and there will be no impact on senior center services. And on this one, this is for renovations at the annex that we result from moving the recreation department and building and grounds from their current locations to the annex. So I'll just give you that little overview, so at home, they can sort of follow along with the script.
Counselor Sacala.
Thank you, I don't really have a question, but I just have a comment, and I know that, I think more than one of us may have asked this question, and it is answered on the website. But I just want to make sure that, and this actually goes for moving social services and youth services to Alcorn, even though they're not traveling very far from their original homes, recreation is. So I just want to make sure that we do a very good detailed review of magic carpet, dial-a-ride, everything like that, to see if we need to add times, if they need to be later, if we need to alter routes, to make sure that anybody who was able to get to these places and programs in their original houses can now do so when they go to their new homes.
Absolutely, it was a very good question, we answered it, and we will be sensitive to that moving forward.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne, moving on to item J, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, request to transfer funds for town building consolidation, NXB and G remodel of $46,760. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From the general fund and capital nonrecurring fund of $46,760, to the annex building and ground remodeling construction line item of $46,760. Certified that the above funds are available as January 12th, 2021 by our director of finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our town manager, Christopher Bronson. By Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Muller.
Again, this is part of what I alluded to in the last, these last two were to spend the money at the annex for moving building and grounds and recreation to that facility.
Anyone, I know some of you asked comments on this, any comments or questions, yeah, Counselor Sacala, I want to make sure you...
Thank you, so just, I guess, one or two comments on this, and I know Donna and I are on joint facilities, and I think Bob now is on joint facilities too, and there's something that joint facilities has been working on for a very long time, is renovating and addition on the Jablonski Center, that would move buildings and grounds among... Move buildings and grounds over to the Jablonski Center, once we were able to do an addition and renovate it. Now obviously, that would can, this is, we'd have to have a referendum for that, so I think, I just want to make sure that this is sort of our short-term goal, is to have it at the annex, and that we are still trying to have an ultimate goal of having all DPW under one roof over on Moody Road at the Jablonski Center.
I think that's the goal, and the long-range plan that BL presented included that, and this is a step towards that, but in the interim, clearly, these facilities are inadequate. We're also going to be able to market that property, recoup a good amount of money, and get them one step closer, but ultimately, yes, to have them all under one roof, where Donald News can keep an eye on everybody, is the desired result.
Right, this we don't need a referendum for, to move them over.
Correct, right.
But long-term, we want to have them all under one roof.
That's correct.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne, moving on to item K, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, request transfer of funds for the town building consolidation, B and G storage building of $308,000. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From the general fund and from the capital nonrecurring fund of $308,000, to the building and ground storage construction line item of $308,000. Certified that the above funds are available as of January 12th, 2021 by our director of finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Riley.
This is to place the Butler Building at the annex to provide for building and grounds to have storage for their equipment.
Yep. Counselor Sacala.
All right, I'm done after this. And it's really just a comment, that I didn't mean to leave Charlotte out, she's on joint facilities too.
I appreciate you actually confirming for everyone, no, yep, thank you.
No, that was it, I just wanted to not leave her out on purpose, I didn't mean to, so she's on joint facilities too.
You have the floor, you sure?
No, I'm done, I swear to God, no, me, whoa, I'm done on this one, I may have questions later.
She spoke like a true lawyer, she wants to correct the record, let the record reflect.
Because I know when somebody coming back, like, you didn't say she was on it, I didn't mean to.
No, but again, I appreciate the last couple of comments, I know you specifically asked some general questions, so I think it's important that people know that these questions are asked by you individual counselors, if you have something, you feel someone reached out to you, so I appreciate that. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne, moving on to item L, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, request transfer of funds for town building consolidation, the Enfield Express, $81,760. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section AF of the town charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From the general fund capital nonrecurring fund, $81,760, to the Enfield Express construction services line item of $81,760. Certified that the above funds are available on January 12th, 2021 by John Wilcox, our director of finance, and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson. By Counselor Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Crisati.
Yes, this is to pay for the move of the tax assessor, tax and assessor's office from Town Hall to the Enfield Express, who'll pay for those renovations.
And remember, also, by us doing that when we did it, allowed some of the success we've had in collecting some of the fees and things, again, to our residents to their credit, let's be honest, our residents are paying their taxes, so, good job to our residents.
And again, it's going to be very helpful now, and the sign is out there again, so again, it's a good reminder to folks, if they'd like to go through remotely, the Enfield Express, we have two drive-through tellers that are there to serve you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor and against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne. Item M, under miscellaneous discussion resolution, request for transfer funds for town building consolidation, Town Hall video conference room of $43,035. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made, from the general fund and capital non-reoccurring fund of $43,035 to the Town Hall video conference line item of $43,035. Certified the above funds are available as of January 12, 2021 by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson. So moved. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Riley. And if I think, if anyone hasn't seen the, the.
Presentation.
Or whatever, the nice little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be a very modern multimedia room that'll be available for boards and commissions in the council. And this is the cost to renovate the space that tax and assessor is leaving to go to the Enfield Express to open it up at one central location. What we hear time and time again from boards, commissions, and community groups, we don't have places to meet, we're in far-flung areas. Well, now they can come to Town Hall, great parking, great entrances, and it'll be a great facility that will enhance government.
Which is again, the foresight we're seeing, we're going to pull out of this at some point and we want to make sure our boards and commissions, who haven't had a chance to come to the Town Hall, come back, just like when we came back to this beautiful renovated chambers, that they're going to have the same, you know, that they're.
Many, many groups will get the benefit of that space.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Hearing unrolled call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susan.
Four.
Counselor Aguirre.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselors Crissati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor and against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne. Item N, discussion resolution, request for transfer funds for town building consolidation, Alden Ave Gymnasium, $400,000. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, section eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made, from the general fund and capital non-reoccurring fund of $400,000 to the Alden Ave Gym construction services line item of $400,000. Certified the above funds are available as of January 12, 2021 by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson. So moved. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Crissati.
Again, this was, this was part of the consolidation plan presented and previously we had the developer, Mr. Belik, come in and also make a presentation. Council unanimously wanted to preserve this building as a gymnasium. The space is almost 10,000 square feet. We can have tournament, tournament basketball, also a lot of other sports available. We'll be able to use that. It'll be available to them. Also, we can have some theater because there's a stage, there's bathrooms, kitchens, and as well, it will help if we have a future expansion of the Higgins School. We have parking now because of the Enfield Express. We're also going to have cultural arts there. And just so people know, and Mr. Wilcox reminded me, the town isn't doing this. This is going to be a turnkey where we work with the developer to our specifications to renovate it. And it will be turnkey like we did with the senior center and some other projects. So we'll have a cost, we'll have a contract, and we'll come in and purchase it. This will put the money aside for that purpose.
Counselor Mangini, then Counselor Aguirre.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate you giving the background. Now, the $400,000 is going to apply whether we lease or purchase. Is that correct? And then council will have to make the decision?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll set, Counselor Mangini. Counselor Aguirre. I'll set. Anyone else have any questions? You know, and again, I know I said this familiar, but it's a beautiful building. We're saving a beautiful gymnasium. And I think even people forget, to your point on cultural arts, the ability to have plays there, it's multi, multifaceted, so it's not just about basketball. It's also about, you know, again, finding more ways of developing our culture in our town. And I think people forget, if you haven't been in that building, it is a beautiful, beautiful building.
And the beauty, Mr. Mayor, of what we've done with both Alcorn and that complex and what we're doing with Santa Daubert's, not only does it benefit Thompsonville, but it moves all of these services and facilities closer to the center of town. So it's much more available and with the parking enhancements we've done, for the whole rest of the town to be able to utilize and enjoy this. So I think it's just very well thought out and it really, again, it does help downtown, but it makes it available and much more easily accessed by all of our residents.
Agree. Sorry, Counselor Sacala.
Thank you. So I guess my question is, regardless if we lease or purchase the gymnasium, is the town going to be the one who gets to decide what occurs in that gymnasium?
Well, it's going to be, if we were ever to decide to lease, which I'm just telling you I strongly disagree with, it would be totally demised premises, which means they're ours. I mean, we would be like other facilities, like for now, the Enfield Express, we lease it, but it's totally demolished. We have complete control. So we will have complete control over the design, what we want it, how it to be renovated. And then when we take it over, either by purchase or by lease, it's our facility. Nobody else will be running programming. It'll be our staff and our people will have 100% control over it either way.
The use and who uses it, uses it.
Correct.
And how, all of that is going to be the town's decision regardless if we lease.
Correct. 100% town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent question. Anyone else? Hearing unrolled call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
He stepped out.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Riley.
Four.
That was four.
Four.
Thank you. Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susan.
Four.
Counselor Aguirre.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
There's ten in favor and not against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item O, discussion resolution, request for transfer funds, town building consolidation, La Mania demolition of $639,667. Resolved in accordance with chapter six, eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made, from the general fund and capital non-reoccurring fund of $639,667 to the La Mania demolition of $639,667. Certified the above funds are available as of January 12, 2020 by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson. So moved. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Riley.
Again, we're not going to leave the structure empty and a legacy for blight. And it's easier not to, you know, do the upfront cost and, you know, we're going to do it. I'm not going to have years from now, you know, people looking and say, geez, they moved people out, consolidated services, now we have a worse eyesore. We've made Thompsonville worse. So that building, what we have, it has to be conscious, we'll pay as we go. We're going to put this much in this year and next year. We're still looking for funding, if there's state or federal money available to tear it down. But we want to remove it as soon as possible. We'll have a green space and we'll market it. I must tell you, as you know, some of the properties that we blighted and removed, we've sold them. The real estate interest in Enfield is very high. And I'm confident that when we market that, we've already had, we've already had interest for multi-use there, for some perhaps a beautiful little coffee shop, a bistro, bakery, and then housing above. We've already had interest and I think we're going to move it quickly. So we want to make it available, remove it, and we'll pay for it and we won't have to worry about it in the future. And that, that's why we're putting it in this as part of the consolidation.
Counselor Mangini.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. And I just wanted also to add some thoughts to what you just stated. Town staff was, was very diligent and very helpful in responding to all of our questions that we submitted. And I found it very particularly helpful, the question that was raised, will the plan on this particular issue adversely affect the children in the Thompsonville area? And the response was that the recreation department does not have a lot of foot traffic for programming, other than some swimming programs. The other programs are typically off-site. And currently, recreation holds programs at the annex, the summer camp, children's entertainment, basketball, pickleball, yoga, swim, dolphin swim, winter swim, adult basketball. So having that knowledge, having that information, I think, is, obviously is a plus, that we're not taking away something, that we're only enhancing. So I just want to bring that forward so people are aware.
And I have an important point. We hadn't discussed it, but as you know, we're always moving several steps ahead. We play chess, not checkers here. And I will just tell you, and we haven't talked about it before tonight, one of the heartbreaks for me was removing the La Mania pool. Now, even though it'll be there this summer and the playscape adjacent to it and the garden spot, it weighed heavily on us. I think we are in such good financial shape that when we do the referendum for roads and roofs this fall, and by the way, the state, our financial advisor, CCM, are all recommending to take advantage of the favorable rates in this economy, to go out in the fall. So we fully will endorse that 100% for roads and roofs. We are also going to put in for a pool adjacent to and part of the New Higgins Park. That's going to be in our budget for your consideration. Again, we don't have adequate facilities. That pool needs about a million dollars, so its day is done. But I think we can afford to do it. Again, right on the edge of town, all of the parking we'll have next to a park, and I'm talking about a tournament, beautiful pool, that the whole town, that we can have tournaments and clubs and sports, that all of our schools can take advantage of, something that, again, look at the high school and the job you did. Look at what you're doing with JFK. Look at what we're doing tonight. And the downtown here is going to be unrivaled by any town in the state. And I think a part, a part of it should be the pool. We brought the basketball back to over at Alcorn. I think we should look, it'll take a couple of years, we're going to look for funding. We are talking with Build America, as the previous presentation said, because we will hopefully now have a train station, we have unlocked almost interest-free federal funding. We're looking at all, you've already spoken to the federal government. But I think if not, and boy, I'll tell you, to get John Wilcox, the finance director, to jump on board and be proactive and want to put out a pool referendum with the other two, as I told you, I can't understate the importance of that. He's a very conservative guy. And, but this is for the children and this is for our residents. And we're changing and transforming the town for the better. You're doing real things to improve the quality of life of all residents, not just Thompsonville, but every single corner of this town. And it's going to want people to move here. The school system, our police department, and now a train station, plus the efficient government and what we're doing with parks, all aboard Enfield.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Crissati.
Yeah. Chris, thank you to have that foresight for the pools. You know, going from three pools to one, really is kind of a detriment. Having that foresight of presenting the pool as part of that referendum, I think, is fantastic. That's something that this town does need, and especially down at that park. You know, if you have a nice, brand-new pool, like you just stated before, you know, with the Enfield Dolphins, open swim, Special Olympics, boy, that would be a great site to host a regional event for our town. So my ears are spinning on that one. So that's awesome. Thank you.
You know, and I don't know if Deputy Mayor Suzak is, I mean, to the point about the pool, we spent a quarter of a million dollars last year. You know, I know with everything going on with the pool of Fermi, which I know Deputy Mayor Suzak was, you know, big in having that part of the budget. I don't know if she's listening, if she wants to comment, but again, I think people, if you look, take a look at what we did to the Fermi pool, I know.
I want to bring the presentation.
Right, go ahead.
Jeff did.
We're going to.
So everybody can see that.
We're going to do that.
Thanks, Mike.
Our agendas have been a little full, so we're saving that for February and March.
So I just want to make, we are committed to making sure, Counselor Crissati has a very good point, but I mean, I mean, I know what we've already done and what we plan, what you plan on doing, you know, so I think the pool, the improvements to the pool out there, I know we haven't had a chance to show people, but again, pretty significant during this, this time of all the things that have gone on. So good, great question. Any other comments? The only thing, you mentioned a chess club. Hopefully, we were able to bring that back after the pandemic. One of my favorite things that recreation has done in this town is creating a chess club. And I know it's been maybe hindered with COVID, but you're right, you got to learn to play chess. You got to learn to play chess as a young person. It's a great, it's a great learning tool. Roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susan.
Four.
Counselor Aguirre.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselors Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
There's eleven in favor and not against, no extensions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item P, request, discussion resolution, request for transfer funds, town building consolidation Strand Theater demolition of $673,000. From, be resolved that in accordance with the chapter six, section eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made, from the general fund and capital non-reoccurring fund, $673,000, to the Strand demolition line item of $673,000. Certified that the above funds are available as January 12, 2021 by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson. So moved. By Counselor Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mangini. Mangini? Mangini, sorry.
I won't belabor, we discussed it earlier. We need to address this. It's adjacent to La Mania, across from the pond. It's going to be prime property for redevelopment. And we did post on the question and answers, a very detailed response to the question about the Strand and its condition that Counselor Hemler had asked. And Nelson, Teresio, has been working on that, looking for funding. He gave a very detailed explanation as to why it's time for that building to be taken down.
You know, I'll just say, I know you folks from the Strand reach out to you. Anytime we have a grand opening, whether it be the, if it's the train station, these folks are more than welcome. They're part of how we got to where we are with the train. And folks who worked on the Strand, whatever these former, you know, committees that we had in town, they're more than welcome. And hopefully, they reach out and we'll invite them. I agree. Counselor Riley, then Counselor Mangini.
This is my last math question of the evening, I promise. So on the slide, it says for the Strand, it's 729,2250. And so now this is for 673, so.
That's, I'm pretty sure that's the referendum limit, John? I don't want to steal, steal his, that's as much, yeah, as much as we can put in our budget.
That's the referendum, that's the maximum that we can, that we can appropriate in this year, for this year. year, for this year. It's based on a percentage of the grand list.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Mangini?
Yep, that's it.
Go ahead. Sorry, you have other questions?
I was gonna say, just two words, splash pad.
Okay.
Looking at that, too.
Counselor Mangini, then Counselor Bosco.
Thank you. And again, Chris, thank you for your earlier comments on this issue, you know, with the Strand. And I think the emphasis here for the people of Enfield to understand is that it is in such dire straits, that it would not be feasible to try and resurrect it, that there's mold, there's mildew, it's in bad shape. And I think you made that point very clearly earlier. And I just wanted to bring that forward, so people are aware that it's just not a knee-jerk reaction, that serious thought was put into this. Thank you.
It was. And although it has, I would say, historical and sentimental value, you know, other buildings have more architectural meaning to us, such as Alcorn, its uniqueness, St. Adalbert's. And I would just say to those, please go and look at the detailed answer. And you know what? Drive by it. Drive by it. Take a drive-by it. And I think you'll understand why it's time for us to proceed.
Thank you. Counselor Bosco.
Well, I'm going to have to vote for it, but heavy-hearted. But more importantly, this is going, this is showing, we're willing to put our money to where our mouth is, because we go after people with blighted buildings, and we have a blighted building. So, you know, we can't, we're going to lead by example on this one. That building's coming down at a great cost. But, you know, it just goes to show, we're really into making sure that we take care of Thompsonville and get rid of blight down there. And when we start with ours, we really have no reason that we can't go after others. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hemler.
Nelson, thank you for your explanation. And, I mean, we've, what we've done tonight is history. And the last one with the Strand, this is, this is the tough one. You know, there's, there is a lot of, it's hard to bring down anything with all that history, and there's a lot of emotional attachment. And I really understand the angst that a lot of people have. But we really don't have any other choice. I mean, it's, it's just going to continue to deteriorate, and there's no bringing it back. So just wanted to make sure the public understands that. Thanks.
And I'll just say, I think that that was the same with the Higgins. A lot of people, for a long time, wanted to save it. We did little Band-Aids in the roof, but ultimately, we had to take it down. And look at the beautiful structure, really. That's a very great addition, is the fire station that's there. And after we're done with that location, people will go likewise. That was a very good decision, I think.
Counselor Spurazza.
Real quickly, I just want to say, I think everybody knows, I grew up in Thompsonville, and I spent most of my Saturdays at that Strand Theater. And to the residents that are my age and remember the back-to-school specials, the day before school, they had these all-day movies and cartoons and pencil boxes. If there was any way on this earth we could preserve that theater, I would be the last person in this room to say, take it down. But I loved it, and it's not salvageable anymore. Before I retired, I put my mask on, and I went in there. And it's just catastrophic in there. The memories, for those of us that were growing up there, will never go away. But, you know, I'm telling everybody, it's got to go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing unrolled call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Tarazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Bradley, four.
Counselor O'Nair.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor and none against, no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item Q, under miscellaneous discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter in a purchase agreement for the acquisition of properties located at Moody Road and Elm Street, whereas the Enfield Town Council wishes to acquire 1.7 acre parcel of land located at 8 Moody Road and identified as Lot 31 on Assessor's Map 75, and the 6.07 acre parcel of land located on Elm Street and identified as Lot 30 on Assessor's Map 75, whereas the acquisition of these two properties would provide an opportunity for the town to address future municipal needs. And whereas pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute 8-24, the Town Council will refer this acquisition to the Planning and Zoning Commission for reporting conformance with the requirements of Connecticut General Statutes 8-24. Now therefore, be resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the Town Manager or his designated entrant in a purchase agreement, and any other documents necessary for the purchase of the properties identified as Lot 31 on Assessor's Map 75, Lot 30 on Assessor's Map 75, for $210,000, subject to review and approval by the Town Attorney, submitted by the Town Manager's Office on January 14, 2021.
So moved?
By Counselor Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Crisati. Did I make sure I didn't skip?
Mr. Mayor, the Director of Public Works is just going to put up a couple of diagrams for those at home to say, where did this come from, out of left field? Well, it really didn't. This has been the subject of consideration by the council. We had to do it in executive session, because it involved real estate negotiations. And I will just tell you that our police department, we're not going to belabor it tonight, it's been a long evening, we've done a lot. But this, again, is for future expansion and enhancement of public safety in the town, both police and EMS. As you know, EMS was started 15 years ago. It's become a premier service in the state. Its facility started in the police department within a couple of rooms and a garage bay. We moved to a site on Route 5 that the fire department exited for a new facility. It's not adequate. And what this does, the acquisition of this over seven acres, it's immediately adjacent to the police department. It's going to allow us to expand the footprint. This property, I won't elaborate tonight, but as Counselor Suzak has indicated in the past, it's part of the BL Plan of Public Works consolidation, and really, we're almost maximized for square footage currently on these properties, even though we consolidated some of them. This gives us great expansion, to be able to hopefully construct a, in addition to the police department, much needed, again, we've talked in the past, when it was built, it was already too small, plus accommodate EMS, and also hopefully, make it a regional conference center that we can use regionally, which will put us in good stead to attract state and federal money. Mr. News, do you have the conceptual plan there? We're not going to get into it, but we've also been working on, again, in staff, above and beyond, doing these type of architectural and engineering. But this is sort of a concept that we have, which the existing police department is on the right. The center and to the left would be EMS, and the conference center, also with a gun range. Why a gun range? We need to train as much as possible, and also, there's a real lack of that in the area. We will be able to use this in rental to other departments. We'll be able to teach motorcycle, be able to do canine, we'll be able to do. A lot of the teaching that Post does, they don't have the facilities, the academy isn't big enough. We have an expert in the chief, we'll reach that another day, who teaches nationally. So I think this would make us competitive for a lot of funding. And again, we were already working with our state reps to put in a bonding request to the state for funds. I've already spoken to Congressman Courtney. We're looking for federal funds, and this is a way to enhance public safety in our town and be a leader regionally. So again, we're always looking to that next step. All of those other things aren't going to be done tonight. We just wanted to be able to purchase the property, and now, we preserve it. So this could be a possibility in the future. And I'll tell you, I'm dating myself, but I was talking to Assistant Town Attorney Mark Serrato. He said, you know, Chris, in 1991, when you were Town Attorney, 30 years ago, I negotiated the purchase of the land that the police department sits on with the owners of it. I knew them. Council said, well, you're a young gun, why don't you talk to them and try to see what you can do negotiating? And we purchased the property in 1991. And I can't promise you, I'll be around in 30 more years to expand on this plan, but at least we're going to get this done now. And it really, again, puts us in a very good position for public safety into the next many decades.
Any questions from the council? You know, and a key word there is regional. We have a fully CLIA-accredited police force that's been a CLIA-accredited for over 25 years. We should be a regional provider. We should be a regional leader. And this is to that vision of where we can find services, where we can maybe bring in revenue from other towns, and use our expertise and our location that is unique to Enfield. And that's part of that vision we've talked about for three to four years. And this is just, again, bringing that vision to, again, taking advantage, and you mentioned EMS, the, now we've developed a world-class EMS program. So again, another way of developing these programs, and become the regional provider that Enfield really should be.
Absolutely. And that's what attracts state and federal money. Our legislators and our U.S. Congressmen said that this evening. The reason we're so attractive for our stations, intermodal, there's busing, there's other components beyond the train. Likewise with this, the state wants to see regionalization. So does the federal government. And that unleashes federal funding for us. Again, we want to be shovel-ready. There's going to be infrastructure money available to the state and from the federal government. Again, we want to have projects that are shovel-ready, that put us in a position to be first in line.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing unrolled call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Tarazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor O'Nair.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four. I'm against, I'm sorry.
No, he meant four. Turn off his mic.
I'm so used to saying four and everything.
I think that's really what you, I think that's really what you meant. Just record what you initially said and strike it from the record. Suzanne, give him a moment to think about it, because I know in his heart, that's what he really wants to do, right, Joe? Joe, let the yay stand.
I'll take the fifth. I'm against it.
But you're for it.
Say that, Joe.
I tried. I wanted to make it a clean sweep, Joe. Three, four out of four, but I'll settle for three out of four, if that's your final vote.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, one against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item R, discussion resolution, transfer, request for transfer funds for the acquisition of the property located at Moody Road and Elm Street of $210,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Town Charter. Following transfers hereby made from the General Fund and Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund of $210,000, to the Public Safety Complex Construction Line item of $210,000. Hereby certified, the above funds are available as of January 12, 2021, by the Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our Town Manager, Chris Promson.
So moved?
Counselor Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mangini. Basically, just allocating the funds, what we just discussed. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Tarazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor O'Nair.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Against.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, one against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item S, discussion resolution, resolution amending the branch librarian job description. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter. The Enfield Town Council does hereby amend the classification plan, plan to amend the job description for position of branch librarian, submitted on 1/18/2021 by Steve Belinda, our Director of Human Resources.
So moved?
By Counselor Muller.
Second.
By Counselor Riley. Jason, I think I want to make, I know you sat, you in chief have been here, so I want to make sure you both get a chance when it's your turn. Jason, welcome. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So this is just an update of the job description. We had a retirement at the Central Library, and Kristen Missetti, a long-time pro-lee librarian, and he's transferred over, so we just, it's not going to update a job description that hasn't been touched since 1999. Really, the only updates are to the technologies that are looking about in the job description, as well as more emphasis on customer service and interpersonality. Really, a test analyst, Kristen Missetti, really sets a high bar over their goals. So I'm making sure we find someone who can live up to that.
Thank you, sir. And I think this is one of the things we've done as a council for the last four years, that's underappreciated, that we've relooked at job descriptions across the entire organization, and the members of this council, and your staff, and, you know, and the staff themselves, have taken on more work. They've done different job descriptions. And when you talk about motivation, I mean, these are one of the things we've done, I think probably routinely over the last four years, but really does make a difference when you give people a chance to maximize their ability to perform in their, whatever their, you know, chosen job is, or the profession that they love. These things are important. I know it's, I know we've done a lot of big things tonight. This thing is important, too, because it continues what we've done as an organization, you know, for the last four years. So again, I think, you know, Jason, thank you. And again, I'm glad to see these come through, that we're constantly not only looking, as we're doing the buildings and everything, but also people, our performance of our people, and what they do best. And that's really what these job descriptions, you know, mean when it comes, when you relook at it. Even if it's a tweak here and there, it's important. I think these things are important for people to understand. So thank you, Jason. Anyone have any questions? Hearing unrolled call, please.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Tarazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor O'Nair.
Four.
So moved?
He stepped out.
All right. Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no extensions.
Item T, on miscellaneous discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to sign a RECOR Master Services and Purchase Agreement. Resolve that the Enfield Town Council authorized the Town Manager to sign a Master Services and Purchase Agreement with RECOR for the mobile LPR system, presented by Chief Ehrlich Fox on January 11, 2021.
So moved?
By Counselor Muller.
Second.
By Counselor Riley. Welcome, sir. Appreciate your patience. You've hung in there. I gave you credit the first, item E. You didn't want to come up. You didn't want to, for the record. So you have the floor. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The item before you is for the vendor that we use for our license plate readers. It is the, it is the IT side. It's the, it's the technical side, if you will. I'm blessed to really have two officers that are extraordinarily skilled in this area. And it's a pleasure to come before you and to tell you that we have, the item before you provides us with a superior product, and at a lesser cost than the relationship we currently have. The document, the contract for signature for execution has been reviewed by the Town Attorney's Office. The requested changes have been made, but because it'll be executed by the Town Manager on behalf of the town, we would ask for your approval for him to proceed.
Again, thank you for hanging in there all night.
Yes, sir.
Any, I mean, you got to ask the chief a couple of questions. He hung in there all. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Or not, as you see fit.
No, I think we're going to let you off the hook. I mean, I mean, this is good stuff, and thank you for hanging in there.
Yes, sir.
You know, I appreciate your patience, and--
My pleasure.
Chris, if you want to say anything, or we're good?
Nope. We always appreciate when the chief can join us.
Again, thank you, sir. And roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Tarazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor O'Nair.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor, none against, no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Moving on to item 16, public communications. There are none, so we move on to item 17, council communications. Anyone like, any, Counselor Hemler?
Thank you, Suzanne.
Suzanne, you got, I mean, this is, this is really not your last meeting, right? You're just joking. You don't really retire.
Well, let me tell you, she's going to be here February 1st, so it's not her last. She, we talked to her today, so Suzanne, yes.
We don't really retire in Enfield.
You can't leave. They don't let you leave.
Counselor Sacala.
No, I was going to say goodbye, but if she's going to be back, I'll save it.
Anyone else? Counselor Crisati.
Yeah, I wanted to mention this earlier. This, shout out to Nelson Torresio. I want to thank you for your information that, that you gave to me in regards to the first-time homebuyer program, and helping, you know, the residents and the people that are applying for this program. But you gave me some good insight, and I want to say thank you for that. And also, I just want to just mention, you know, to Chris, some of your sayings, and I kind of like this shovel-ready, you know, and, you know, if you build it, they're going to come. And, you know, during this pandemic time, you know, economists say that, you know, spending money to make money during this time is a good idea. And so, your vision is right there. I just want to say thanks for really a good evening here.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions or comments on council of communications? I just say, in closing, I just want to commend everyone on the council and staff. I thought this was a very professional, and you folks were very genuine. You all deserve credit for your answers, your questions, and the respect you showed to every member of our delegation. So thank you all. I mean, I think it shows the quality of each of you as an individual. I know in these, in these things that are going on, it's hard sometimes to just focus on what's in front of you. And I appreciate everyone in this room focused